All right, good evening, everyone. It is Friday, April 19th, and I call this meeting of the Brookfield Select Board to order at 6:20 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The one announcement is that we, the meeting is being recorded. The town is recording, and Mr. Kelleher is recording with the spaceship. And, well, the people, well, the people on the home video can see his little spaceship camera. Is anyone else recording? No. Excellent. All right, so we are now moving on to Agenda Item Number One, Town Administrator Candidate Interview, Brian Sawyer. Brian, come on down.
Thank you very much for having me.
No worries.
Pleasure.
Have a seat, yes. All right. Chris?
Yes, sir.
Can you make sure these microphones are picking up Brian enough? Or have you, yeah. So Brian, can you just say, hey, Brian, what's your name?
My name is Brian Sawyer.
All right.
It could be better.
Give him one of them.
I can, I can use my outside voice.
Say that again.
Brian Sawyer. Just try to.
We can turn it. Test.
Do you tap it?
All right. Just want to, I was just concerned with the two microphones here and none there. The, the, the home audience would, would miss out on your participation. So, so thank you for coming on, on rather short notice, but we're looking to get this position filled. And so, I guess, why don't you start out by telling us a little bit about yourself?
Okay. So, as I had said, Brian Sawyer. I'm a lifelong resident of the Town of Shirley. I'm currently finishing up my second full term in the Town of Shirley as a member of the Select Board. Previous to that, I've been on, you know, an array of different boards and committees, specifically as a member of the Finance Committee, Chairman of the Finance Committee directly prior to being on the Select Board. As far as professionally, the last 15 years, I've been the General Manager of the Bull Run Restaurant. You know, it's a large, larger restaurant. It's been in my family since 1946. And I'm looking to, you know, transition out of the restaurant business. You know, not, not completely. You know, it's a family business, but I've been working over the last couple of months, where I'm just looking for more of a traditional work schedule. So, I saw an opening and, and submitted my resume and travel letter.
Okay. Thank you. It's like, I know that in Brookfield, we've, the town, our town administrator, Kelly, her contract was scheduled to end at the end of this year, and she found, and she, she found what I would say was a better opportunity, working over in the, over in Lester.
Okay.
And so, when that opened up, it's like she, she'd intended to stay with us till the end of the, end of her contract, end of June, but when a better opportunity comes along, it's like, you can't, can't always not take it.
Yep.
All right. Does he, do either of you two have prepared questions?
I do.
Excellent. Could you lead us off, Brad?
Figure out which one I want to start with. Do you have experience working with intermunicipal agreements, and what's your approach to regionalization?
So actually, so, a lot of the, I saw a lot of similarities between Brookfield and the Town of Shirley.
Mm-hmm.
You know, population, budget, you know, budget-wise. You know, one of the biggest similarities that I saw is, you know, we're both rural communities where about 90% of, you know, the revenue comes from, you know, residential property taxes. And so, we've regionalized or had intermunicipal agreements on multiple occasions. So, in 2012, when I was on the Finance Committee, or, or right prior to when I was on the Finance Committee, we entered into regionalization as far as our school system. It seems very similar to, to your scenario here in Brookfield. Our elementary schools are separate. You know, we, we began in 2012, and we've been doing very well ever since. We also are part of a, an additional regional system, the Shoah Valley Regional Technical High School. Several years ago, our communications, we were looking for a communications upgrade, and part of that region, the Air Shirley Regional School District, we've always had a great partnership with the Town of Air. And so, we regionalized just several years ago as far as our communications. We've had intermunicipal agreements with a very unique community. It's what used to be the former Fort Devens, which is made up of land of the towns of Harvard, or historical land, the towns of Harvard, Air, and Shirley. And so, I think, three years ago, we had a vacancy right before winter with our DPW Director, so we entered into a temporary intermunicipal agreement with that. And we've had intermunicipal agreements as far as leasing land with, with the community of Devens, so, a fair amount, both as a Select Board member and as a Finance Committee member.
And when you say communications, could you, I'm not getting a clear idea of what you mean when you say.
So, as far as dispatch, you know, mainly if, if we're talking, you know, our 911 service for police and fire. So, instead of reinvesting, you know, separately, we were both looking to upgrade our, our communications, you know, system. And, you know, we kind of pooled our resources and upgraded that, you know, together, and it seemed to be seamless. You know, it, it's located, the communications center is actually located in Air, but it's took the town over, and, and it seems to be working well for, for both towns, so.
Okay. A question I have is, what do you, what do you see as the, specifically with regards to the Brookfield Town Administrator position, what do you see as the, as the biggest challenges? And I would say the biggest, yeah, they got that covered, from what you see coming into the position?
Um, as far as, you know, some of the challenges, I think it's going to be a lot of the same that, that Shirley faces. You know, you're a rural community. How do you, you know, offer, you know, the appropriate services with limited, you know, revenue? How do you maintain your rural character and aspect, you know, without either bringing in, you know, unwanted development that you, you know, that may bring in revenue but you might not want? I think you have to have a balanced approach with that. You know, but kind of speaking to that, I think what you seem to have covered is, you know, it seems to be, you know, obviously I was here for the first screening, but I also had come to kind of drive around and familiarize myself, and it seems like a very, you know, quaint, you know, rural community, so.
Okay. So, do you want my traditional questions, or do you want my non-traditional question?
Whichever you prefer.
Whichever I prefer, okay. I am going to save a non-traditional question for later that I've picked up from some panel interviews that I've done with my company recently.
All right.
Okay. I realize we didn't actually introduce ourselves, which is usually one of, like, the standards when you're doing a panel interview.
My bad.
Brian, you, you functionally introduced yourself. Do you want to go through and do some quick introductions?
Yes, I'm Tom Reagan, I'm the current Chair of Select Board, and, let's see, and this is Brad Kudelski, he's our Vice Chair, and Beth Coughlin, who is our Clerk.
So, it sounds like you've, it sounds like you've served both on the Select Board and with your Finance Committee. Is it a Finance Committee chair?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So, there's a lot of different types of members of those sorts of boards. Can you describe what sort of member you were relative to your time on the Finance Committee, and then relat, relative to your time on the Select Board?
Um, you know, so I've, I've served as, you know, the several years prior to joining the Select Board on the Finance Committee, I was the Chair. So I kind of took on a leadership role in that, in that position. But I think in any position that I've, that I've held, you know, within town, or whether it's, you know, my personal profession, I feel like some of the qualities that I bring tend to be, you know, more reason, logic, that type of approach. You know, and, and obviously, there's, there's going to be an array of different personalities to deal with, and, you know, I think working through those, you know, calmly and, you know, reasonably always tends to, to be the most successful, in my experience, so.
Okay. If you were going to describe your level of knowledge of things like mass general law associated with small communities, the intricacies of town budgeting, the, you know, end-of-year recap, making sure that people are checking the right boxes from a standpoint of interaction with treasurer, accountant, department heads. Talk to me a little bit about, you know, how you see the role of town administrator, like, in and amongst that.
I mean, you know, I think being the kind of, the main point of contact, kind of the person that's bringing it all together collaboratively, so, you know, depending on, you know, when this position would start, obviously, I know you have annual town meeting, annual town election coming up. You know, obviously, my assumption is you've worked with, you know, your advisory committee and, and, you know, your staff to make sure that, you know, you have to have your warrant articles, you know, posted and approved at a certain time period. I, I, you know, would assume that you've worked significantly on your budget at this point, you know, and that you have your, your warrants, you know, for the, for the election posted. Working after that, you know, I think the next step would be to make sure at the year end, as you're approaching year end, that you're making the appropriate, you know, budget transfers to clear out, you know, that, the current year's budget. I think directly after that, you know, you'd work in the fall to work on the recap to make sure that you have your free cash submitted in, in time. And then I think you come right into December, which, at least in, in my experience, you'd start at a very high level, kind of the budget process again, where you're meeting with your department heads at a more strategic level, to talk about their needs, to, to talk about capital needs, things of that nature. You know, so I've had a fair amount of experience. You know, not only my time on the Finance Committee and the Select Board, I do have a financial background, a master's in accounting, and a bachelor's degree in business administration with a concentration in accounting. I also served on the Budget Coordinating Committee, and I was on, we got a grant while I was on the Finance Committee through the Collins Center, which was a, you know, comprehensive financial management grant to create financial policies. And, you know, I was, I know in my first screening, I was talking about, you know, some of the things that I'm very proud of. One of the things, and, and, you know, it's across a whole spectrum of items, but one I would definitely say would be the financial stability that we brought to the town. When we first regionalized, I can tell you, with the, with the Air Shirley school system, it was very difficult. Regionalization was the best thing I think we've done in our communities in a long time. But for us to do that, we had a kind of a phase in where we were dealing with, you know, assessments that were.
Storming, forming, norming, and performing, right? That storming is pretty brutal up front, right?
Yeah, and, and, you know, the last several years, we've been able to present balanced budgets. The assessment with the school systems have been coming in very reasonable. We've been providing those balanced budgets without using any one-time money, free cash, reserves. We've brought, when we, when we wrote those financial policies, I was, I was thinking, well, these are great, and I'm glad we got the grant from the Collins Center, but I just don't foresee Shirley realistically meeting these. And, and, you know, the biggest would be, you know, part of the reserves. It was, you know, our goal would have 10% in our stabilization. We've exceeded over 10% over the last several years. This year, we have, our, our budget's 17 million. We have, if our transfers go through from free cash for annual town meeting, as I suspect they will, we'll have 1,800, 1,000, 1,875,000 in, in regular stabilization. Capital stabilization will be 475,000. And then the last two years, we created two specialty stabilization accounts. One is to address our kind of long-term facilities, and that it will be approaching 450,000. And we're, we created at our special town meeting in the fall, a special stabilization account for debt management, and we'll be putting $100,000 into that. So I, I feel like, you know, financially, we've been making a significant amount of progress in Shirley, and I, I feel that's been my strongest background with, within, you know, my roles within town, so.
Great, thank you for that.
Does Shirley have a town administrator?
We do. So I was the Chair of the Town Administrator Search Committee, so I know the, familiar with the process. That was back in 2018, and we've had a town administrator for, for a significant period prior to that. But this town administrator has been with us since 2018, so.
And then, for the, so the, does the town, is, so the town administrator does, handles the day-to-day.
Correct. So, yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, you know, the Select Board, you know, I feel as though we're working intricately with, with the town administrator to, to set policy and, and, you know, kind of long-term goals and strategy as far as running the day-to-day. Of course, I'm getting updates on those on my way here. I got an update both from the town administrator and, and the chief, that unfortunately, we have a, a missing persons notice, which, you know, I hope is resolved, you know, by the time I'm out of the meeting, or if not sooner. You know, and, and so, as a Select Board member, I've been, you know, aware of day-to-day operations, you know, but the town administrator's role I would see would be, you know, to take care of the day-to-day and update the Select Board appropriately, which I think I found, been very fortunate in Shirley, where we've had the town administrator for, for six years. Our police chief, fire chief, they've been with us for, for decades, perhaps not exactly in that role. They have been for, for a while. Same with the DPW Director, the Library Director. And so I feel like we have a really good balance of, of understanding between, and the Select Board members change, obviously, but, you know, knowing what we need to be updated for, just having that balance of, of, you know, making sure that we're aware, but at the same time, having the town administrator run the day-to-day operations, so.
And then, does, does your town administrator, do they, do they have authority to, to hire and do evaluations, or are those, are those reserved by the Select Board?
So, they do evaluate, evaluations, you know, the, the department heads tend to do the evaluations of their department, which, you know, I think is appropriate, as, you know, I'm not in law enforcement, I'm not in fire science. And, you know, the town administrator's working with, you know, coordinating with, with the department heads and all employees, and, you know, monitoring them and giving us updates and assessing. But as far as hiring and firing, typically, I rely on the department heads to give recommendations. More so, the, the town administrator would be giving recommendations based on, you know, whether it be clerical, or, you know, going through the hiring process of a, of a town accountant, town, you know, you know, treasurer, collect, treasurer, collector, things of that nature. But the, the hiring, firing, disciplinary action, that does come from the Select Board. Union contracts, you know, same thing. Or, or negotiations, actually, for whether it's union contracts or, you know, department heads. We're working with the town administrator, but we're essentially, as a Select Board, executing those and finalizing them, so.
How do you envision working with the employees in the town, and how do you, any idea of how to motivate them? Not that they're not motivated.
Or what's his leadership style?
Right, your leadership style, and how do you plan on collaborating all of them with the Select Board?
So I, I think that one of the first things to do, in general, would be, you know, if, if being hired as a town administrator, would be, you know, meeting, you know, the department heads, the town employees, and getting a sense of, you know, what are the, you know, what are the needs of the town on, on a short-term basis, on a long-term basis, on a capital basis? You know, kind of understanding, understanding that. You know, I think, especially in a small town, I, I think, you know, you need to be available to, to work with different employees, or, or obviously residents. I mean, that's obviously the, the main goal and function of, of Town Hall, is to make sure that we're providing, you know, the appropriate service to the residents. So it's very typical, you know, that you're approachable to the residents, that you're approachable to, you know, the staff. As the General Manager of, you know, my, my business, you know, it's part of my job as General Manager is to go, even this day and age with all the modern technologies, to go to the actual bank and post office. Both are located right next to each other in, in Shirley. And so, every day, you know, I go and I run into residents, and they always have, you know, not always, but, you know, every once, every once in a while, they raise concern.
It's like our transfer station.
And they see me as, you know, accessible, so. Yeah, that would be kind of the same approach that I would, that I would bring.
I have two very different questions, if you all don't mind me going two, two in a row. The first is, um, talk to me about what's good turnover and what's bad turnover?
Um, so I think, you know, in general, in, in town, in, in municipal government, especially a small town, I don't think it's uncommon to have some turnover. I think part of the challenges would be, you know, financial, but I don't think they're all of the challenges. I think, I can tell you that part of the reason that we, that I, that I ran for Select Board in Shirley was, the town was going through a significant amount of turmoil. We had, we were incorporated in 1753, and we had two sitting Select, Select Board members recalled, which was the first time in, in the town's history. We had a significant amount of long, longtime employees leave. We had a town administrator that I think was, you know, you know, perhaps a little bit misunderstood, but also perhaps using, you know, not, not the best approach, or at least how, how certain residents or employees felt. And it just seemed to be, you know, very, it was more chaotic than it needed to be. And so I thought, you know, running, you know, kind of bring more of a calming approach, and I, you know, I, in my time there, it's, it's been more successful. I talked to you about certain department, department heads that have been there for a while, but I think, you know, employees kind of follow that, that tune, and I, I feel as though, if it's a comfortable working environment, you're going to have some turnover. I don't, you know, that's never, that's, I think, always going to be a challenge for local municipal government. But I do think that you can minimize it. I also think, you know, an example would be, I, I think our chief of police is getting to the point where he's almost overqualified, and, you know, he's.
He's, he's a, he's a, he's a lost risk just by virtue of that there's other opportunities out there.
Exactly. And so, one example would be at last annual town meeting, you know, we're pretty limited with what we can offer financially at this point. And I, I think he's fairly compensated. I think he thinks so, which is why he's been with us for a while. You know, but one thing that we were able to do that was not a, you know, specifically monetary situation, was we promoted him, or, or town meeting, I guess, promoted him or gave him the authority to be a strong chief. You know, we thought that was fair, based on he'd been, you know, serving the town in a, you know, so, similar capacity or, or length as the fire chief. The fire chief had always been a strong chief, and, you know, I think that, you know, helped him understand the confidence we have in him. And he's been with us, you know, well, at least now coming up on another year, so.
Generally, in interviews like this, somebody will ask you, what's your greatest achievement? I'm going to ask you the opposite question. Tell me about the, the time that basically if you were telling this, this story, you would say, no kidding, there I was.
So.
But no, no, but you understand what I'm saying? Like, like, because I, because I have my, I, I, I won't talk about it on cam, I won't talk about it on camera, because it's not my interview, but I have my story for every interview that is, what, what was my most glorious failure? What was your most glorious failure?
Um, well, I will say that, over time, I was able to, to turn into a success, but originally, you know, I think we took, it, when we regionalized, you know, part of what we've been doing is, you know, upgrading the schools. We, we renovated the, the high school, and we had a fields project, which our, our high school athletic complex or field had not been updated since, I think, the 1960s, and that, that's not an exaggeration. And so, for me, that was, my, my mother was an educator, and, you know, that was just something that I thought, you know, the school and the region's been going in such a positive direction, that it just seems to me that it's, it's guaranteed that this, you know, that this will pass. You know, it required a debt exclusion. And understandably, you know, some residents, or anytime you have a debt exclusion or an override, there's going to be some residents that are concerned about it. And I felt as though, you know, perhaps we pushed it through a little too quickly. It, it did not pass. We kind of went back to the drawing board and made slight adjustments, and it didn't pass again, which I would say, you know, especially because I was such a proponent, you know, I was, you know, disappointed. And I thought, you know, what's, what is this approach that we've been taking? And, you know, finally, you know, the, the way that we were able to become successful, because I, I'd mainly been the Chairman of the Finance Committee at the time, and I'd just become a member of the Select Board, and my kind of third approach was to, you know, not try and go completely head-to-head with, you know, those that were opposed to it, but to actually bring them closer, I was able to arrange meetings, you know, with the main opponents of them, of, of the field complex. And we had, you know, special meetings with, you know, the contractor and, and the engineers and the school administration to see if we could implement some of the, the things that they were suggesting. And we were able to get some of those accomplished, and it did end up passing, and that was several years ago. So in the end, it, it did turn out to be a positive, but, you know, we.
But living through it forward, it didn't feel so good.
Yeah, I didn't know if you can fail three times of debt exclusion and then, you know, because it's, you know, some residents were feeling as though that we weren't listening to, which, which in the end, you know, I think we were able to listen to the, the residents' concerns and, and, you know, make it a success, so.
Cool.
This is more of just a, I don't know if I'm even, I'll ask it anyways. Do you guys have marijuana in your town?
We do. We went through a bylaw change. It was probably beginning, and I want to say 2015 was the very initial steps. And I thought, it was, it was a very new process, and it was very confusing to the residents, very confusing to the, you know, boards and committees, you know, and.
We're similarly.
And, and, and my, you know, my understanding, which seems almost, you know, the opposite, would be, you know, adopt. would be, um, you know, adopting, being proactive to adopt the appropriate bylaws. So you can kind of mold what, you know, what the marijuana facilities, you know, will be, wha- you know, I think there's, at least our, going through the process, there was retail, there was, you know, manufacturing, and then there, I think, was wholesale. Um, and so trying to identify, you know, what's best for the particular community, what was best for Shirley. Um, and so we were able to kind of go through that bylaw process. Um, it was difficult and, but I think we found the right bylaws for the town of Shirley. And um, we did have several immediately. Um, we had several, um, I think you, you entered into host agreement, so I was the um chairman of the select board at the time. So I, um, in the initial process, and it was very similar to this process, we had, you know, multiple submissions. Um, we narrowed it down to kind of three finalists. Um, and then we went forward with one where we ended up signing a host committee, uh, a host, um, host agreement. Um, we uh created um kind of a, a marijuana subcommittee um to follow that, that process. Um, they have been in operation for a little over a year. Um, we're, we're just beginning to kind of see some of that revenue. Um, and I think what, we followed the process, we, you know, it, it was a very public process, obviously, as, as local government is. Um, and the residents had an opportunity to, to, you know, to vote and, and kind of help give us an idea and craft what was best for the town of Shirley and, and it seems to be, um, you know, working. It's been up and running for a year now.
So you've been through the cycle of it, basically?
Recently, yeah.
Can I ask my non-traditional question last, or do you have one, Tom?
Um, I have a question, but so, um, uh, thinking about it, it's like the, the skill set required for this position, or, or the, the position requires a couple different skill areas or can be served by it. As an example, um, legal, understanding master of law and how it controls how the town government operates, financial, the management of money, the accounting and being a local professional's personnel. And so, um, I would say, how do you see yourself? Uh, where do you see your, where do you see yourself being strongest on those three, I'll say, three legs of the stool? And is there a fourth leg to the stool that I didn't mention that you think we should be considering when we think, that I got the candidates?
Yeah, so I mean, um, as I'd said, I, I, and touched on a little bit pri- uh previously, I think my financial background, you know, is probably the strongest on, on those. Um, I think, uh, you know, personnel. Um, I've had the opportunity to, um, so,
Working in a restaurant.
Well, and, you know, it's, it's a larger restaurant, um, you know, where our, our revenue is, you know, five million. It's, yeah, on any given payroll, we have eighty-five employees. Um, and, you know, so I was the person that was in charge of hiring, firing, um, you know, disciplining, uh, thi- you know, things of that nature. Um, and it's every aspect that you could imagine. I mean, we're talking teenage, you know, bussers and dish, dishwashers to the executive chef. Um, you know, you, you go on the town side. Um, I think there's, um, and perhaps, and I, and I know you had mentioned kind of the legal aspect of this job, which, um, you know, I, I, I can talk to in a moment. Um, you know, but I feel like, um, you know, something that was, that was newer to me, as I hadn't experienced until I was in local government, was, um, you know, the union aspect. Um, I, and, you know, I thought, you know, so we have several different unions within the town. Um, and working through those negotiations and I, I learned, because I was very concerned about that, is, well, I'm not a lawyer, how would I, you know, how would I know how, how to work through a union, you know, contract? And I think, um, knowing that you have the, you know, you can utilize town council, knowing that you can depend on um, your department heads, you know, I'm, I'm looking with, you know, working with the, um, you know, so we just went through our, for this um annual town meeting, we have our DPW um, union. Uh, previous to that, we had done both fire, clerical and police. And, and utilizing the, you know, the department heads. Um, you know, another aspect of legal would be, um, of course, you're, you know, you're gonna work with your town clerk to make sure that you've got your warrants posted, that your minutes are, you know, that your meetings are posted properly, et cetera. Um, you know, but procurement, um, you know, I, I think part of, um, you know, this process would be uh, when realizing I wanted to make a transition to town administrator, I think part of that process would, you know, be to get a procurement um certification. That would be one of my goals personally. Um, you know, just because that's another legal aspect, um, you know, to, to being a town administrator, so.
That's one of those, like, kinda, once it becomes your professional, that profession, that's one of those, like, minimum bar things, like, you become the chief for care, or you tend to be the chief procurement officer for the community, so. Uh, at least in small communities.
Yeah, exactly.
So, um, I'm gonna ask you my non-traditional question. I just picked this one up from a, a different panel interview. Zombie apocalypse hits on your drive home. Tell me your plan.
I have none of those.
Did you?
It wasn't a zombie apocalypse, but it was something similar.
Zombie apocalypse.
Zombie apocalypse hits on your drive home tonight. What's your plan?
Well, um, gonna try and do everything I can to survive. Assess the situation, I guess, um, you know, try and figure out, um, are the roadways still safe? Um, you know, if so, um, do I have enough uh fuel to get home? Is, how long is it gonna take? Um, you know, what am I gonna do for the evening if, uh, if it's gonna take a couple days to get home? Um, you know, what are the basic essentials, you know, food, water, et cetera? How do I keep in communication with my family with, um, you know, people that would be wondering where I am? So really assessing the situation and trying to work through it, um, as best you can and, and trying to communicate, um, you know, with those that are depending on me. You know, the progress that I'm making and how I plan on getting through the zombie apocalypse, so.
Thank you.
How would you rate yourself with technology?
Um, I would say fair. Um, I, you know, I by no means um, am the most technical, uh, but, you know, I've, I'm fairly technical. Um, but I feel as though you need to be resourceful of, um, you know, as a general manager of the restaurant, um, you know, that does the banking, the financing, um, you know, if an oven goes out, a piece of, you know, if a pilot goes out in an oven, you know, the chef calls me and says the pilot light went out. And, you know, you can, to an extent, familiarize yourself with the equipment. You know, but then you realize this is not something that we, you know, we can fix in-house. And so you have to familiar, familiarize yourself with, you know, um, what technician do I need to call? When are they gonna be available? Um, you know, things of that nature. And so I think, um, you know, my, it would be the same approach with technology of, you know, do I think that it's, it should be reasonable that, you know, if need be, you set up, you know, a camera, um, you know, or a microphone. Um, but as far as, you know, do I find myself uh being able to wire, uh, you know, a, a conference room? No, that's, but, but I, I'm sure we could figure out, you know, uh, how to procure the appropriate people, you know, to do so.
Oh, um, what uh, what accounting system does Shirley use? I, here we use Vadar. Do you use that also?
We do use Vadar.
Okay, um, are you familiar with it? How, how familiar are you with it? I was a very question ask.
In my position currently, I'm familiar of how to read the reports. Um, and, you know, how to ask for, you know, the reports that I, that I need. I, I don't have any technical use on it. Um, you know, I, I do think if I was in a more operational, you know, standpoint, um, you know, I, I think really that's the main function of the town accountant, but to be aware of, of basics, um, you know, it's, you know, I definitely think that's part of a job. I think so. Um, if I were to look at my position as the general manager, um, you know, I don't, my aunt and uncle own the business. Um, I would see them as kind of the executive level, the select board level. Um, and myself as a general manager, you know, in town, I, I see that equivalent kind of as the town administrator. Um, I don't know how to make the sauces at the restaurant. I, you know, I, I know basics of cooking, but I, I'm not a, um, you know, seasoned, you know, chef. Um, but, you know, I, I feel as though that, you know, you can work with, you know, whether be the department heads or the town accountant or what have you, to, to definitely have a basic understanding and knowledge um, of, of God forbid, if something happened and, and, you know, you were, you had a vacancy with the town accountant, um, you know, that things don't completely cease, um, that you'd be able to work through, um, you know, certain vacancies or, or issues that arise, so.
I mean, I, I would say the, the important thing is to be, it's like for, for that position would be to be able to pull information out and not so much be manipulating it.
Correct, yeah.
And hopefully we don't have a vacancy with the accountant. I like our accountant.
Nice, well, that's always key.
But she's a, uh,
She's outsourced.
But she's, she's, she's outsourced, and so if she became unavailable, the, uh, the, her company would provide another one, hopefully, hopefully as good.
Do you, um, so we've used Clifton Larson Allen in the past to, to do that, um, kind of the same thing, outsource. So, um, you know, we found that, um, you know,
We are so much healthier, we are so much healthier for using an outsourced accountant than we were when we had an in-house accountant.
Yeah, I, I feel somewhat.
How are we doing for Tom?
Um, I was just going to ask, we are, we, we've got a little under fifteen minutes left.
It's time for him to get to ask his question.
I was gonna ask if it's that time.
Yeah.
It's like, Jeff, you're raising your hand. What are you trying to, uh?
Is, is the public allowed to ask a question or no? I don't.
I don't.
We don't have, we don't have public comment or question on the,
On the agenda.
The agenda, sorry.
So what can we tell you about Brookfield and the town administrative position here that you would like to know?
So, um, you know, it just, um, kind of what I had said is, you know, part of the initial process, if I were, you know, town administrator, is I would ask, you know, the department heads of staff, you know, kind of what are your, um, you know, what do you see as, you know, upcoming either challenges or, um, you know, what, what, what is important to you as far as, you know, in the near future? Um, you know, as far as Brookfield, so, I, I didn't know if, just to get a better sense.
Kind of hinted at what I, what is, marijuana is new to the town, so it's understanding how to navigate that and educate residents on the process of going through it. Um, the other kind of things are, you know, blighted properties, for instance, in town, how to address that. And, uh, just infrastructure in general, economic development.
Uh, it's very, it sounds so similar to Charlie. We, we went through, um, um, a minute, we, you know, a minimum maintenance bylaw, um, you know, in the town of Shirley, which, you know, you had to navigate, um, you know, uh, you know, you had to navigate it appropriately, just because, you know, people definitely don't want, you know, their, with their property being told, you know, s- you know, specifically what to do. Um, and that's understandable. Um, and, you know, economic development, that's, you know, and having that balance of maintaining, you know, your rural aspect. Um, that's always, um, you know, something that we've been going through. So, um, you know, I, I do, that was one of the main reasons that I, when I saw Brookfield become available, um, you know, that was, you know, one of the main reasons that I applied, just cause I, I see a lot of similarities with the town of Shirley, so. Um, I, I also, I guess, was wondering, um, you know, kind of what the timing, you know, and processes, as, as far as I, you know, I, I think obviously there are two other, um, candidates that you're going through um, an interview with this evening, um, you know, when do you plan on making a decision? And I guess, once the decision is just made, what, um, kind of what's your timeline expectations?
We haven't formally even discussed.
So we, yeah, we haven't formally discussed that. Um, but if I was gonna, if I, if I was, we can, we can discuss it now, right? So, we're, we're doing three interviews tonight. I doubt that we're gonna, I doubt that we're gonna like convene at the end of the third interview at nine thirty tonight and make a decision, cause that's never a good time to make a decision. So, um, I suspect we'll put it on an agenda for next week sometime, cause we have a couple of meetings where we're getting together anyway. Um, and then, um, I, you know, we would expect that a person would need to give reasonable notice. So, um, the, the start date would be negotiated based on their obligations to their current employer, so. If it's somebody that's currently with a town, a lot of people who are with towns have a thirty-day notice requirement.
Yeah.
I don't know what your notice requirement would be with your business, but.
No, I, I mean, I have been working out a, a transition. It was, uh, you know, kind of, you know, unique. This is, um, you know, which is, um, you know, over the last several weeks, um, well, it's, it's been a, a closer to a two-month transition. Um, the last couple of weeks, you know, I, I haven't been, um, I've been more on the financial side and, and things of that nature and not physically working the, you know, night and weekend shifts. Um, which is a, any change. I mean, I, I would've made this work otherwise, but, um, you know, Friday nights are, you know, for the last fifteen years, I can tell you exactly where I was, cause I was working at the restaurant. Um, so, uh, you know, I have been working through a transition, um, and so that's, I, I feel as though I'm, I'm, you know, fairly more available. But once again, if, if it came to that, um, you know, through your decision-making process, I'm sure that'd be something we'd negotiate, so.
I mean, I would say that we are, just, just looking at the calendar, I would say we would probably have the warrant book and be mostly lined up for town meeting before a, a, what, a candidate could start. And so therefore, it's like, and once that happens, the next big, the, the next big thing would be getting finished, closing up the year and towards the end of June and getting things closed out in July. So I would say we would probably be looking to have someone in here know later than mid-June, and if they're available earlier, then that's not a bad thing.
If it takes us until mid-June, then you and I are gonna fight.
No, I'm, I'm, we're saying that the, the successful, the,
I'm just letting you know.
The preferred candidate may not be available until then.
It's, it's possible, but if, if that's not,
It better not be our reason.
It better not be us.
Oh, oh, trust me, that's, it's not going to be because we're slow.
All right.
I, I, we're violently agreeing here.
Okay, just checking. Speaking of violently agreeing, we have five minutes before the next candidate is due. So, tell me about the last time some idiot got in your face and how you handled it.
Um, well, so, um, you know, I feel like I've been fortunate enough where, um, you know, I don't know that people have, you know, really gotten, um, into my face, but people have been heated, um.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're working at, you're a restaurant general manager. I can't imagine, I cannot, I cannot imagine that you have not,
That's fairly more.
In that role, gotten some, some.
We are more of, um, you know, kind of a, um, you know, either, whether it's a family or more of a, a, you know, a, not fine dining, but, you know, finer dining establishment. Um, so we're, we're fortunate with that, but a- also a lot of what we do is entertainment. Um, and, um, you know, some of the enter- entertainment, um, you know, you have people that aren't there, especially, you know, although dining is available in our concert venue, um, you know, so our concert venue is three hundred people. And we have all sorts of genres, you know, everything from, uh, you know, blues to, you know, to rock, to country and folk and, and so. You know, I've had experiences, um, you know, where you've had to shut people off, you know, um, and, you know, for that, you know, you don't rely directly. You, you, you rely on your human nature and, you know, try and be reasonable and calm, you know, but you're also relying on your tip certification, et cetera. Um, I feel like on the town side, um, you know, I, I feel like es- especially when you have, um, there'll be scenarios that come up, um, you know, where residents will be passionate about it, or they'll be, um, you know, concerned. Most, most of the time, residents' concerns are, you know, are, are definitely legitimate. Um, every once in a while, um, I've had an experience where they, they seem to be kind of, um, you know, a little bit more upset than, than necessary. you know, a little bit more upset than, than necessary, but that, that's extremely rare. And I think dealing with it in a calm manner, et cetera, um, I wasn't there personally, but this past week, I know there was, um, a scenario where there was a, a person that was upset, where they felt as though they were wrongly charged, um, you know, for non-payment of, of their, um, taxes. Um, and, you know, they seem worked up, but I, I felt as though the staff and the town administrator, um, from all reports handled it very reasonably, very calmly, um, and were able to de-escalate the situation. So, um, you know, I think that's part of the job, um, and, and I've had experience, but I've been, I have been fortunate where it's not been, you know, anything really outrageous, so.
Great.
I, I've got one more question.
Sure.
With your experience both in the private sector with the restaurant and in town government, uh, could you highlight for me some areas where you think, um, can managing and running things in town government is different than in a private business? Where, where do you see differences?
Well, there's definitely, you know, um, lega- legality issue in the sense of, you know, there's, um, you know, there's a, a process, a pu- a public process that you have to, um, follow, um, you know, with municipal government. As far as, you know, to basically have, um, you know, you know, to have a select board meeting, you have to post it, you know, things of that nature. There, um, are procurement laws, um, as far as in the private sector. Um, you know, if I wanna hire an electrician, I can hire any electrician I want. If I want to meet, you know, with my management, or I wanna meet with, you know, the owners, um, you know, we can have a phone call, you know, at any time that I wanna pick up the phone, or we can meet. Um, so I think, um, you know, those would be the main differences. I think you'd see a lot of similarities. Um, I think, as I had said before, um, I view very much, um, being a general manager as a, as a town administrator. Um, there are certain things that, you know, you have to get done each week, each month, each quarter. Um, you know, in the restaurant side, whether it's, um, you know, making sure that payroll's complete, making sure that you have your, you know, taxes filed, et cetera, um, that you have your, your, you know, your, your banking secure. Um, or something as simpler as, is, is making sure that, um, the new features are updated on your point-of-sale system. Um, but at the same time, there's certain things that come up. You have an employee that calls out, that, you know, an employee that needs to be addressed for, for whatever reason, you know. Um, the, uh, the fryolator, you know, has an issue and you need to have that fixed, or the dish, you know, the dish machine. I foresee that very similar as town, you know, you have to make sure that you have, um, you know, your, your recap, you know, completed. You need to make sure that, um, you know, you have your town meetings posted, that you have your, you know, warrants, um, properly posted and then all of that. At the same time, something's going to happen. You're gonna have a vacancy. You're gonna have, um, something comes up with an employee. You're gonna have to have disciplinary, disciplinary action. Um, you know, a culvert may have, uh, uh, you know, an issue. And so I think that, you know, it would translate well into that, um, so.
Great, thank you.
Any last questions for us?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But, uh, I very much appreciate, you know, you having me, and I look forward to hearing from you, um, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, very nice to meet you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe drive home.
Is there another, is the other one out there? Yep, please do. Are you doing okay, Jeff? You and me both, brother. Although I, I, although I do yoga about two or three times a week, so I can still move. Yeah, and those chairs are not built for somebody in your frame.
Yes, the one with the microphone.
How are you?
Good, Brian, I'm Tom.
Hi, Tom, Brian Moriarty, nice to meet you.
Brad Kedelski.
Brian Moriarty, nice to meet you.
Beth Coughlin.
Hi, Beth, nice to meet you. Oh, the microphone, right?
Yes. We're, we're used to being here, so, you know, it's like this, that's the guest seat.
I, oh, good, I get it. Not a problem. Thank you for having me.
And this is, this is open meeting and we are recording, just so you're not surprised.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Brookfield.
So, uh, let's see, uh, and just as introductions, uh, I am the chair of the committee.
Okay.
And Brad is the vice chair and Beth is the clerk at the moment.
Thank you.
She's the most tenured.
Yes, Brad and I have been on the board for a year and a half. Beth has been on for.
I'm the one that's most questionable.
Have you, are you been here nine years now? You been on nine years?
No, this is my second term.
Okay, oh, you, you, you.
This is my third.
Third, because you, you, you ran against Comtois, then you ran against Tony, and now you, and then this one, or did you have two elections before Tony?
Oh.
Tony ran against you three years ago, I remember.
That's right, he did. Okay, so, yeah, this is my, so, this is my, the second, the first year, first year of my third term.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. Wow, I lost track. And then I did the finance, or the advisory committee for, I think, five or six years before that, because I ran unsuccessfully two other times before that, so.
Lots of involvement, right, Beth?
Oh, yeah, so.
Yes, I, so, uh, Brian, tell us about yourself.
Uh, okay, uh, well, my name is Brian Moriarty. I live in Hatfield, Mass, uh, which is about fifty-five miles away. Fifty miles away, I guess.
Is that north of Deerfield?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Watley's nearby, is it?
Yes, correctly.
Did I say that right?
No. But you brought it up, I wasn't gonna correct you. I'm here for an interview, right? It is Watley, yeah, yeah.
That's kind of like Key Bitty.
Exactly, or Lychester, but, you know. So, uh, I, I'm here this evening, obviously, to, um, to speak to you about the town administrative position. So I, I'm from Hatfield. I'm from Hoyoke, actually, but we've lived in Hatfield for twenty-five years, so we're still newcomers, by the way. Um, uh, in that small community, and it, it's very similar in size, population, finances, as Brookfield is. So when I saw the advertisement, I thought it would, might be a good fit. I am a former fifteen-year school committee member in Hatfield. I am a former nine-year select board member in Hatfield. I chose not to run for reelection last, last May, so I had three consecutive terms on the board of, on the board of selectmen. So that was a, that was a good decision I made, uh, just to, you know, kind of step back and let, kind of let the next generation come in. But at the same time, um, uh, the company I was working for, which was a, uh, international telecommunications company, had a worldwide RIF reduction in force. So, um, we've been spent, so I was laid off, and my wife and I have been spending a lot of time visiting our now eighteen-month-old granddaughter, who lives in Wayland. Um, so we've been going back and forth for a few days at a time. Uh, my background in both, I worked at Verizon and then Ericsson Communications, that is in my resume, uh, where I was a implementation slash project manager. So I oversaw, um, large, complex projects. With Verizon, it was more in the four-one-three local area, New York, maybe. Um, for Ericsson Communications, they deal with cellular companies, so, uh, that was nationwide. Ericsson provides the equipment and the software for the majority of, uh, cellular companies, uh, especially the, the big, the large ones. So 5G was the big push. 5G got completed, and then the, you know, the work kind of slowed down, so. Um, I thought that with my background in both, uh, the private and the public sector, uh, town administrative position would kind of be right up my alley, to be perfectly honest with you. Um, so here I am. I mean, I could, I could go on and on, but I don't wanna bore you with any detail, but I mean, that's kind of the, the prox- the local, the, the most recent type of, uh, information. I didn't know if you had any specifics, or, at this point, as many, as far as the background goes.
I think that, I think that was a good introduction.
Okay.
And I'm sure additional questions will come up.
Absolutely.
We'll have follow-up questions around things as we ask you questions, or, and then there'll be a chance for you to ask us questions also.
Sure, sounds great. Thank you.
All right, so I will, uh, I'll start.
Okay.
Is that, um, in, in your experience, um, how do you, it's like, uh, I'll, I'll ask the question the same way I asked it last time. Um, in the role, I, I see the role having requirement of several different, I'll say, major skill areas. Legal, financial, and personnel. And how do you, uh, how do you, how do you rate your strength in each of those? Um, and do you, are there any other legs under that stool that you think we should be aware of?
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
No, I, I just.
All right, so, um, well, so my, my background, both politically and in the private sector, um, through the years, being an implementation project manager, uh, has been to, um, certainly deal with the public, the public on, on the, on the, uh, selectmen side, or, or the customer, however we want to, so constituents and customers. Um, and so that is not, that's, I would say that is certainly one of my strengths, the, my interpersonal skills. Um, when it came to being a select board member, dealing with the public, I always listened, um, heard the, the praise or the complaint, uh, and then did some research if, if there was something a constituent had an issue with. Uh, and I was always timely in getting back to them. So I, I guess I'm, I guess I would say that from a interactive perspective with, with the townspeople, and, and the boards, by the way, and department heads, you know, with everybody, uh, I would be very comfortable in having conversations. And whatever the topic was, I'd be very comfortable, if I didn't know the answer, in researching that for them. Uh, from a legal was one of the questions you asked, from a.
Legal is one of the legs under the stool.
Yes, okay. So, I, I mean, from a legal perspective, if it's talking about HR policies and ethics, and, and I don't know if that is what it means, from, from your perspective. Uh, I'm very familiar with the laws and very familiar with how to treat people, um, whether it has to do with a particular law or not, just how to treat people, uh, fairly. And, uh, you know, if there would be something that would come up of a legal perspective that I needed to research, I, I would do that as well. Or if it was something, I mean, truly a big deal, reach out to town council and, and, and find out what the answer may be. And the other leg of the stool, sorry?
The other two were financial and personnel.
Right.
So like, like managing employees.
Got it, okay, so, um, I would say the financial aspect of it, being on the board, we always dealt, we always worked with the town, town administrator, uh, of course, and we have a finance committee, a five-member finance committee, and that was, uh, how we would put the budgets together. Um, we've had some financial up and downs in the community through the years, um, for different reasons. People passing away, people leaving their position, you know, there were some different things that happened at certain times, but we, we would come together. The board of selectmen, finance committee, whoever's role, whoever's responsibility, the issue may have fallen under, um, to work with the state if we needed to, um, and to work with the town administrator, and again, with legal if we needed to. Um, from an overall overview of the financial side, I'm, I'm very familiar with the various, um, you know, the free cashes and the tax levies and, and those types of things. Again, I'm not sure how, how deep, or if I'm answering your question.
No, I, I, I think, I think you generally answered it.
Specifically, okay.
I was a little concerned you weren't going to address it in the beginning, and then, but then you came to the legal side and the financial side and, and addressed those.
Okay. Uh, and again, yeah, the legal side, I mean, I'm not an attorney, so, uh, but as far as, as far as dealing with people, um, following HR policies, following everything so that nothing comes back on the town, and everything is fair with an employee, a colleague, a department head, a constituent, I'm very familiar with those policies and procedures.
And then, and then what about on a, I would say, personnel in a super, in, in, in the supervisory context?
Okay, so in, in a supervisory role, uh, the way Hatfield did it, I'm not sure how Brookfield does it. We had, um, lia- board of selectmen members were liaisons, one to each department. For, for example, I might have police and fire, somebody else would have the DPW, somebody else would, would have the building inspector, and we would rotate those every year. So from a personnel perspective, uh, that gave us the opportunity not only about to, uh, familiarize ourself with that department and that department head, but that also gave us an opportunity to review with them policies, procedures, job descriptions, uh, et cetera, for each of the roles for their particular, um, employees. I think that what I would probably like to do as a town administrator is be involved with, uh, the development of personnel, I don't know if personnel files are right, uh, job descriptions, and then, um, have, have feedback, or, or have sessions, whether it's quarterly or every six months, with the department head and maybe with an employee. Uh, it's like, where do you stand right now in, in your job? How, how are you doing? Do we need some remediation? Are you doing great? You know, rather than just yearly evaluations, where you may have been able to correct an issue or give somebody credit prior to that, I think it's important to have feedback, so everybody's on the same page going down their, down the road.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next.
What's your experience in your town with inter-municipal agreements, and what's your approach to regionalization?
So with, with other local, with, with neighboring communities type thing? Uh, we tried to do a lot of that. Um, it was a big push, uh, with the schools back a while ago. We, we still have an independent school system. Hatfield is the smallest independent school district in the state of Massachusetts. Has its own high school and has its own elementary school. Not without its challenges, but, you know, in today's day and age. Uh, so we've entered into them, I haven't been the one that has signed on the dotted line. We would approve MOUs, perhaps, uh, memorandums of understanding, uh, with other organi- excuse me, with other communities to, whether it was, um, using equipment. It, it happened mostly with the DPW, but, um, you know, that, that town has a certain mower we need, or a street sweeper, or whatever. And so there was that kind of, uh, those type of arrangements. We entered into some MOUs, even, um, post-contractual agreements. Uh, for example, somebody might have, um, taken on another position where a sti- rather than a stipend, it might have been a memorandum of understanding to, to change the salary base or something like that. Uh, we didn't have a ton with other communities, but we had some. So my involvement with that would have been at the selectmen level approving and having conversations with the town administrator, uh, or asking questions or fact-finding with the town administrator, as far as that goes.
Okay, um, so, based on your experience in town government as a select board member, and then now looking to move into the town administrator role, how do you see, like, what do you see as the interaction between select board, town administrator, finance team, department heads? Like, what's your vision of what that looks like in a community like Brookfield?
Sure. So I, I would say first off, um, the town administrator, at least in Hatfield, and I think it's not so much just the person, but I think it's the position, is kind of the glue that holds everything together. You know, the, the central point of contact, most likely, for all those different departments that you mentioned. So certainly the town administrator works with and for the select board, you know, is there, uh, directly. I also think that they are the go-between for other departments that wanna get information to the select board, uh, or ask questions of the select board, so they can be the intermediary for, for things like that. I think that as a town administrator, you wear many hats, depending on the day of the week and the time of the day, um, because you are interfacing with all the various departments. I can relate, you know, experience from, from my own career, and I know our town administrator, um, is ver- is very busy, was very busy while I was on the board, I'm sure she still is. Um, but people relied on the town administrator to give them the information. They would then find the informa- you'd find the answers, or, you know, find the que- find the answers to the questions they were asked, and then, um, bring it back to that particular person or group, um, department, uh, and again, certainly the, the select. And again, certainly the, the select board is a, is a big part of who the town administrator supports and works with. By the way, I'm sorry, excuse me. I was just gonna say, if, if, if I'm going off topic, you know, if you need to pull me back in, feel free to say, well, how about this? I mean, cause I, it's, it's hard to know exactly what the-
I don't know if I need to, but I'm really good at that.
Okay.
Beth has shown that she has no problem with doing that, if she thinks it's necessary.
Excellent. Well, I, I just, you know, I, I want to make sure I'm answering the question the way you were, what you're hoping to hear, or something along those lines at least, you know?
Yeah.
So one of the changes we're going through here in Brookfield is the legalization of marijuana. It's now legal. And we're working through our first HCA agreement. Do you have any experience in the town of Hatfield?
We do.
Marijuana? What is it and?
So, um, we have experience with it in Hatfield. It was, it was brought up at town meeting, town meeting approved it, um, to allow, if, if every, all the goals were met. We entered into, I think we're up to three right now. The planning board got heavily involved in that, by the way. Because depending on, so we're an agricultural community, if, if you're not familiar with that. So, uh, a lot of our decisions were made to try to balance business and balance, you know, open space, uh, because there's a ton of farmland. Agriculture, yeah, we have a lot of agriculture in Hatfield. But, so certain areas, but some of the farms back right up to homes, and, and, uh, so depending on where the grower, potential grower might want to go, that planning board got involved and had all sorts of hearings and things like that. Uh, most of them passed because they were legal, but if they didn't meet certain criteria, those didn't. To answer your question, we have had an experience, we have had no issues with the companies that are involved in cannabis. The most recent issue, or the issue we had before I got off the board, and was just starting out, is the mass legislature changed the law. And so we were expecting some financial benefit from having entered into a cannabis agreement with one of the businesses. But they were arguing that, well, wait a second, that agreement for the 3%, uh, the legislature did away with it. So we, uh, we were arguing, but you have a contract, that you entered into this in good faith in the beginning. I don't know where it stands right now, to be honest with you, but when the law cha-
Oh, because they changed it from a-
They changed the-
From a standing amount to, you have to prove impact before you get reimbursed.
Correct.
So initially it was viewed basically almost like a surcharge on whatever the cannabis organization would get, and now you have, now-
You've got to prove there really was an impact that-
That there was an impact, and the only thing you can collect is the tax if that you have retail. So if you have manufacturing or agricultural, which is all that's before us right now, you actually don't get a-
Correct.
You don't actually get any-
We don't have retail.
Unless, yeah, unless we, unless we can demonstrate that those operations are causing-
Some sort of harm.
Impact to the town.
The-
So, yeah, so we, we're, we just signed our first social community agreement.
Okay.
So the, the businesses are just starting their licensing procedure with the state CCC. So you, you have blazed the trail ahead of us.
You know, I, I understand, so I'm a little, uh, I was disappointed that existing agreements couldn't be, and they probably could if the, the town attorney and the cannabis attorney got together and figured something out. Because I understand where a business like, well, if they change the law, I really don't need to pay you. But by the same token, that law originally is what allowed communities, or encouraged communities-
These opened their doors.
To, to open the doors, exactly. And because it was, um, it was a lengthy con, initially, a lengthy conversation to get into that business. But, but they did, because the promise was, we thought, well, we're gonna get 3% of, you know, the, their profits, or, you know, 3% of the business. And then by the time this particular business got up and running, there were delays, delays getting the license, not from the town, but from the state. Everything was delayed, and by the time it all played out, the, the new law was changed, and we're like, come on, man! So, so we've had no problems, they, they all, and I, I would suggest, I know nothing about the business that's coming to Brookfield. I'm guessing, um, since it's out, it throughout the state, I would imagine that they really know what they are doing and have the proper direction from, you know, legally, and from the state, from the cannabis commission, et cetera. You know, you just, you, you lay out the guidelines, and everyone has to follow what they're supposed to do. But I don't know as far as, um, I have no idea what the contract says, uh, or the agreement, revenue-wise, um, ultimately for Brookfield. Or, or anywhere else for that matter.
Right now, we're just looking, it's a one agriculture-
Gotcha, yeah.
Manufacturing coming down.
Yeah, and then, and then on our warrant, on our warrant, we're gonna institute, we're gonna be the only community that's going, going to half-measure on the tax, and we're only gonna tax it 1.5% once we have retail, in the hopes that maybe it'll at least get us a shot.
Yeah, right, yeah. Good, that took, that's actually a good idea. You know, 3% was kind of the percentage rate that everybody was using.
Everybody's either 0 or 3% right now, so we, if we adopted it at town meeting, we'll be the, one of the first communities to have something in the middle.
Yeah, yeah, good. Well, there's a cost of doing business, I, I mean, and, you know.
Exactly.
Good, I, I wish you luck.
Well, and surrounding towns have it at 3%, and you go to 1.5, maybe-
That's business, man. I'm with you.
Anywho.
The big buyers will come to Brookfield.
Yeah, right, yeah.
There you go. So, but anyhow, um, so, let's see here. I, I try to ask the same questions. Now I know, it, it's looking at your resume, and it, it doesn't look like, other than your time as a select board member, that you've really been in like a direct supervisory or management position. But I'm sure you've seen a lot in your professional career. So I know you've probably worked in teams that have had turnover. So tell me the difference between good turnover and bad turnover.
Okay, so, um, and I did let this, I believe I let the search committee know this, um, during our meeting. But while I didn't have direct reporting people to me, a, as a manager, we worked with multiple unions and, um, employee, non-union employees to get the work done. So I had, I would, I would say they were dotted line employees. Did I do their yearly reviews? No. Was I involved with their manager saying, so, you know, how's Brian doing with all that work you're doing out in Philadelphia? You know, a technician, like, doing great, customer loves him, you know, he's doing great, and, you know, no, no problems, keeps me informed so I can tell the customer what's going on. And we also had the experience where there were some that we were getting negative, I was getting negative fee, I was dealing with the customer, and then dealing with these departments who had the technicians that were doing. And occasionally you'd get, you know, we all have a bad day, but occasionally you, you'd hear a couple different times, maybe, about a particular issue, situation, personality, wha, whatever. And I would deal with the manager of that particular employee. And then they would, it was all was in their court, you know, we, I, one time I had a customer say, don't ever send that person out here again, or I'm like ripping up the contract type thing, you know, so. Some conversations were stronger than others that I would have with employees, um, with the managers of, of the employees. Good turnover versus bad turnover, I think, I like to think of it as, good turnover is probably a person that worked for you, or in your department, might have another opportunity for growth, career growth, personal growth, and that's why they're leaving. I think negative turnover is probably, uh, if you see, I mean, somebody just might not like the job and they're, they're done. If you see, conversely, if you see that person or people leaving, then maybe there's another issue, that that's why they're leaving. So I would say, the first thing I would do is probably, you know, you try to do exit interviews anyways to find out what people are leaving. You know, look in the mirror, i- am I not managing these people or this department the way I should? Could I do better? Or is it an external factor, you know, something I'm not aware of that these people are just, you know, not jiving with, and that's why they're leaving? So I, I, I think that there's two kinds, I think there's a positive, but I think there's a negative. And I think if it's a negative turnover, you need to find out, if you can, why. And then correct, if, if it's something that you can, you correct the issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, when I asked that one, the last time I did two questions in one, so if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask my, my other question, so I'm-
Ask three if you want.
There you go. Most interviews, people say, what was your greatest success, right?
They sure do.
Story, right?
Yeah, I got one ready for you, if you go that route, go through.
Okay, but I'm gonna, but because I'm a-
What's your worst success, or last worst failure, I should say, not worst success, right?
That didn't come out right.
Tell me about your most glorious failure. That you're willing to share in public.
Yeah, um, well, I don't know that I have, I, far from perfect. Glorious failure, um, you know, I think oftentimes, as a select board member, at least I did, you guys probably do too. Sometimes you just know you've got the right idea, you, you're, you, you got all the information, everybody in town's gonna love the idea. You're not even gonna have to try to sway them to go with you. And you bring it forward, you know, and they're like booing at you at town meeting or something, it's like, wow, didn't see that coming. You know, that happened on a, a couple of different things. The good news was, it wasn't just me, it was the select board, you know, but we went in there as a, we're gonna go get them, and, uh, it just didn't pass. It, you have to know your audience, right? So I, you know, there's, there's been times that there's been issues, but we bounced back. We redo, in those instances, we found out why they were such a negative response from the public. You know, we are a farming community, uh, and we are between the communities of Amherst and Northampton. Great communities, um, but there's a different mindset in Hatfield of life and things like that. Older community, actually, um, a lot of farms and homes have been handed down through generations. So it's, it's different, it's not a college town, you know, you know where I'm going, I think. And so sometimes, things would get brought forth that were maybe not the right thing for, people didn't think was the right thing for Hatfield. I can give you one example, uh, and it ultimately worked out, but we were being asked to provide a bike path from Northampton for like-
To Amherst.
300 yards of Hatfield property that was next to a railroad track. And the misconception, I feel, was that the, many in, in the community just figured it was opening up the floodgates to people to come to Hatfield. I, I don't know what they were thinking, like, to hang out or something. You know, and, and we were trying to say, listen, this is to have people just drive on through on their way to Northampton, Hadley, Hatfield. And it was just, it, it, we just didn't, I don't think we did a good job upfront explaining what this was all about. I think people thought people were gonna get off their bikes and just start camping under trees and doing whatever they wanted to do, and-
Opening the floodgates of the hot and tots.
Correct.
They do in Northampton.
Uh, you said that, not me. Well, it's, it's just a different community.
I witnessed it.
Yeah, yeah, and there's no, and, you know, it, you know, we all live where we live for the reason we live there. And, and Northampton's a great community, this wasn't a knock on them, this was, uh, but it's just a different mentality in certain things, social, social aspects oftentimes. And so we ultimately won them over the following year, at a, at the next town meeting, after having open public session so people could come and ask all the questions, rather than spend three hours of a town meeting on one question about a bike path. You know, when you're trying to approve a $10 million budget on, on other things.
So you contracted the farmer who was adjacent to the bike path to put his bull in the field along that path, so no one would get off the bikes.
Correct, and we, we already put up all the no parking signs, so you, you're not coming on a car. I, I mean, we, we did it all, you know? It took a little longer than we anticipated, it's being paid for by a different organization. We had no skin in the game, except 300 yards along a railroad track. And it worked out. So I hope Hatfield doesn't re, because I'll never get re-elected if I decide to run for selectman again, but. So I would say, I don't know if that answered your question or not, but it's, okay.
It did, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I want you to ask your technology question to this guy.
How do you rate yourself with technology?
The technology of, uh-
Just dealing with technology, being able to deal with reports and spreadsheets and-
Oh, I, I would say a strong B. And I, I'll, yeah, I'd say a strong B. I mean, cer, certain parts, well, you know, everybody says the Microsoft suite, right?
More or less project management.
Yes, right. So, uh, I'm fine sending out reports, I'm fine doing reports, doing spreadsheets, um, email, of course. You know, Word documents, um, things like that. Did you want me to drill down, I mean?
More into the, being able to project manage the role itself of the town administrator, managing the tasks going forward.
Via technology, or just in general?
Yeah, utilizing technology.
Oh, you, well, so I, I guess, technology, so I would say there's a couple different things. So there's the project managing part of technology, um, when you're talking about the spreadsheets and sending them out, and who needs to use them, and manipulating them, and that type of thing. That's fine, I'm, I'm comfortable doing that. I think there's the technology where we, uh, use the social media to try to stay as a transparent board and town administrator and government, uh, using social media technology, whether it's Facebook, whether it's Instagram, whether it's anything else, or our own app, technology for, for the townspeople to be able to come in and access us, access information, uh, and reach me, or whoever's sitting in this seat. You know, there's, I noticed, I, I think I saw actually that you guys have a new app that you use for communicating outward, was that fairly new?
Yeah.
But it's only for iPhones, right? I saw, I, I'm, I'm saying this because I'm a, I'm a, I'm an Android user.
I don't believe it's just for iPhones, and it's been a challenge, um, we do have, it's a free thing.
Yeah.
Part of the challenge is, we don't really have participation from department heads to utilize, or, not that they're not wanting to use it, it's just an afterthought.
Sure, yeah. We had a system called Code Red.
Yeah.
Same, same thing. It basically blasts out emails and texts, or, or a voice, you know, canned. West Street will be closed tomorrow from 8 to 5, you know. But we, we try not to overuse it, and, and it can be, um, positioned in the sense that for, you don't have to send it to everybody in town if you know you're only affecting a particular section. Which I would consider being part of the technology that we, we could use.
Yeah, I'd say communication, I mean, this town is very lacking, we, we don't do a good job.
You should, you should see, enlist Lindsay to use it for highway announcements.
Oh, she's aware of it.
Oh, she's aware, okay. Well, I'm not, I'm not signed up for it, so I don't get anything.
It can come in handy.
Actually, now that you say it, I should go back down there, because I think I rolled it more with Brian than with her.
It can come in handy, especially if there's a, a true emergen, I mean, it's called Code Red, but, um, but it's not free. I, I don't know if it was free for-
This is free.
Yeah, that's, I read that when I was looking at it on, on your website. But it's very good, we have a lot of, you do too, probably, we have a lot of old pipes under the ground. And when the weather changes, uh, some of those pipes burst. And so they're great when you have to say there is a water main break on Route 5, um, it's closed. You know, it's already blocked, you know, so it, it's good for an emergency type thing like that, as well as to heads up, hey, don't forget there's a town meeting, you know, type thing, so, because-
We get mics, smooth, dulcet.
Yeah, we have a robo-call.
Oh, excellent. Well, you know-
It's the most utilized.
Right, yeah. Well, and you've got to, we've got to be up on technology because, uh, and I'm guilty of it myself, I don't get a newspaper anymore. So technology, online, everyone's got a cell phone, everyone's got a computer, so we, we need to allow access to our town information, which I know Brookfield does, um, because I was looking at your website. And, and as did Hatfield, as does every community, but I mean, it's important. But you still need to be able to reach those people, uh, in our community in particular, who don't have a computer, and don't have a cell phone. They still have a landline, I have one of those too, uh, because I still feel an allegiance to Verizon. Because they need to be reached as well, you know, but, so we're always notifying, um, of the various projects, and of course you have to do it legally anyways. For ex, and I saw you guys have, uh, you're opening bids next week, I think, for upstairs, the cable, the 24th? So, so- Yeah, well, my point being, you still need to use- So, so, yeah, well, my point being, you still need to use written newspapers or newspapers so people can go online and read the newspaper. For those types of instances. Did I answer your question? When all was said and done? We're, but we're talking landlines and we started with technology. Is land, is a landline even technology anymore? I don't know.
It is. It's a, it's a well-proven technology.
Absolutely.
That works when the power's out.
That's why I still have mine.
I started in a landline telecom company.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right, there you go. Yep.
All right, I'll go next. The, what do you see as the, as, I would, I would say the three main challenges facing the, the person selected for the, for the position?
Well, I would say familiarity, becoming familiar with the town and the businesses and the departments and the player. I mean, you know, getting to, I don't know who the other candidates are, but I mean, it certainly would be nice to have all the players and names. Probably, I would, I would say also communicating with the board, communicating with the department heads of, our vision, the, the board's vision and the town administrator's vision to the various departments. And how are we gonna get there? Your budget looks pretty solid. At, at least I saw last year's budget, you know. I like your stabilization fund. Could do a lot with that. Kidding, kidding. But to see that it was 7% roughly, or almost 8%, at least last year of your total budget, that, that's pretty good. We, we haven't been in that position in, in Hatfield.
Yeah, even, even times when our finance, financial house wasn't in order, we, we kept it tamped down to the point that once we did all the math, we were still healthy, so.
Yeah, it's important. But I noticed you still had a pretty good amount in your levy limit, too.
We're a little close right now.
You know, we always look close.
Listen, you I was just gonna say, we, we've had ours, you know, you've, you've gotta live in the times you live in, you know. We have lots of projects. And it, it's been much lower than that. It's been above it, you know, it's, it's been above zero, or above five bucks, but not by much sometimes. We, but anyways, back to the, I think the three main things. So certainly meeting, figuring out the, the community, getting a feel for it, getting a vibe. Getting a feel and a vibe for all the, the players, the department heads, the employees. And I would say probably what's important and, and being open to residents coming in and communicating to, you know, talk, speak with me. But I think also to sort of get a feel for where does Brookfield wanna go? I mean, we're, we're gonna become a cannabis community, right? And so what else is, is there anything else sort of ready, ready to go? Are there any major projects? I, I mean, I guess that would still be part of that fact finding. But I, I think that would be probably the, the most important thing right up front. And to get out there and be seen as the new town administrator. Let people see you. Yeah?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In the interest of consistency, I'm gonna ask you a non-standard interview question that I picked up from a recent panel I sat on at my day job.
Okay. See how it goes.
Zombie apocalypse hits on your drive home today. What's your plan?
Well, I'll call my wife and let her know that I'm having a problem getting home. Zombie, that is a non-standard question for sure. I mean, I guess it doesn't matter if it's truly an apocalypse, right? I mean, you, you know, what can I do, right?
Go open up a whiskey.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's a legitimate answer.
Where's that cannabis place, right? You know.
Yeah, are you gonna be stopping an electronics store with a baseball bat guy? Or are you gonna stop at the pot shop?
Might as well go out and just wait for it to happen, yeah. I like it.
Fair enough. Okay, gotcha. All right, so then my real question is, last time you had an angry customer, angry technician, angry towns person in your face. Tell me about how you handled it.
I let them vent. It, it would be a towns person, to be honest with you. Most of my jobs were remote.
Okay, so you weren't necessarily, you had angry phone calls.
Correct. Oh, I, I had plenty of those, but actually an in-your-face kind of person. You know, we, we have certain people in town who you can never do the right thing.
We don't have that.
As an elected official, I know. I understand. We're on camera. I get it. Wink, wink.
I need to break my mug.
You know, I, I think you need to let people vent. And I think you, you need to see if you can ask them or get them to calm down. Let's say, and if they accost you out front or of, of the building or town hall or something, say, let's go into my office, you know, that gives a minute or so to hopefully walk, you know, me in front of them because I'm going to my office. Maybe during that walk, they can calm down just a little bit and then go into my office and shut the door and say, what can I do for you? And then you, and you know, you, you hear them out. And if you don't have the information, I think you gotta say, if it's something that you can just pull up and quickly say, that's not right, this is what it is, look, turn the computer screen. Or, you know, I don't have the answer right now, I, I've gotta reach out to the DPW to find out what that situation is, but I will get back to you this afternoon. I mean, it's, it's all about communication. Every question you've asked me so far, every question you're going to ask me, all is about communication. Whether it's internal communication, whether it's communication with the public, it's all about transparency, it's all, in my opinion, by the way. It's all about communication because I learned through the years, in my phone company days, that landline days, things break, right? Things break now, but things broke then. And all a customer really wanted was, we understand things break, and I'm the same way. All I want is an update when it's gonna be fixed. That's all I want. So communication is key. So I'd say, when do you want me to call you back? And they'd say, every four hours. Say, no problem. Three and a half hours, I was on the phone call saying, still not fixed. Yeah, I know, because, you know, I, I said, but we're, we got three of our best guys on it right now. We're close, man. No, depending on the customer, you'd say, we are working on it. The problem is the flooded manhole. You know, we gotta dry out the cable. It's taking a little long. Okay, you know, I say, I'll call you, call you at three. Call them at seven, call them at 11 at night, you know. And so one time, one, one of the customers was, called me every four hours. So I called him at seven at night. And then I called him at 11. And he said, what are you doing? I said, you said, call you every four hours. Not at night, don't call me at home. I said, you know, you gotta be more specific. You said every four hours. Four hours is up. Which, I want me to call you tomorrow morning? Eight. Okay, you know. But we, he, we needed to communicate and we needed to know what the expectation was. And I, I don't think it, I don't think that the public sector is a whole heck of a lot different than the private sector, depending on the position. And we used to say that to our DPW guys who were most often the people in front of, out in the public. And we used to say, just, you know, if you're cutting down a tree and it falls on your foot, just say ouch, don't say anything more than that. And, you know, make the phone call, report it, relax, take it easy. You're the, you're wearing the big shirt that says DPW on it, you're driving the big truck that says DPW on it. Everyone knows who you are and if you do something or say something or act in a certain way, and I'm not picking on the DPW, by the way, but they're the ones out there doing trucks and cutting trees. You know, just be mindful of that. So I, I think the, the communication aspect of, with you folks and with the constituents is very important.
I'm gonna leverage that, your answer here and say, based on your experience as a, an elected office at the town government and in the private sector, what do you see as some of, some of the big differences between operating and being a town administrator versus being in a similar type project manager, or similar slash project manager position in the private sector?
I think that in the public sector, you're a lot more visible. Even if you, and I mean that because visible that people are gonna walk, can come in and see you. They can call you on the phone, they can call you guys and say, hey, Brian's not getting back to me. I, it's not, it's similar but different. I, I think you're just more in front of the public. You're more in front of your customer, you're more in front of your constituents when you're a town administrator or when you're a public official. I mean, half the time, you know, my neighbors would tell me something that another department did and then I'd have to go back to the town administrator. And I'd say, did you call, did you call the department head? Small town, everybody knows who everybody is, by the way. I'm, I'm sure Brookfield's pretty similar. Unless you're a newcomer, like me. I've only lived there 25 years. I think I already told you guys that earlier.
I just moved in 16 years ago.
Okay, yeah. So we don't live in a Moriarty household, we live in Mrs. Furch's house.
The only person that's from here is him.
Okay. She was the fifth grade teacher that everybody who's older than me had and loved her. So that helps me a little bit. Actually, one of my campaigns, I said, you know me, I walked a little white dog on Maple Street. I live in Mrs. Furch's house. And people are like, you're, you're, you're a jerk for saying that. I said, well, people don't know which, and there's only like 10 houses on the street, so I mean, you know. But anyways, I think the difference is you're, you're seen in public, you're on TV. You, you know, you're just seen more often, you're, you're right in their face and so they can come in and speak to you. As far as how they're treated, which I don't think was really your question, but I, I think you just treat everybody with respect. You know, there's gonna be people that are ticked off for some reason, there's gonna be people that are happy, there's gonna be people that are never happy, there's gonna be people that are always happy even if something bad I mean, you know, and I, I think that I am pretty good at sort of going with the flow. And figuring out what, what makes people tick and, and really what they're, ultimately what they're looking for. And just treat people nicely. I mean, it's really, it's really easy. I think. Not always easy to do.
It's an easy concept.
It's an easy concept.
It's a straightforward concept, it's difficult for
Thank you for clarifying.
It's like soccer, just dribble past them.
Just get the ball in the net, right? Right. Yeah, I, I think it's, it, it's just, you, you get a feel for it. You gotta get a feel for the community, you gotta get a feel for the people that are, wanna see you and, and that's fine. I mean, that's, that's what we're here, that's what you're hiring a town administrator for, to sort of be the, the person on the street for you, so. I'm sure you get your own calls anyways, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
We are, we've got less than 15 minutes remaining. Are there any more questions before we let him ask us?
I was gonna say, it's probably his turn.
Yep, I saw that on the clock too. So what questions do you have for us?
I don't have a whole heck of a lot. I mean, I think, I'm curious as to when you're looking to fill the position. I know you have a town meeting coming up. If you've even gotten that far yet.
I would, I would say, well, we are, we discussed this briefly when the previous candidate was in and we're not intending to make a, we, we don't expect we're making a decision tonight.
Yeah, oh, no, that's, I wouldn't expect you to.
But I mean, I would say that part of it, it's a, I would say we're looking to fill the position sooner rather than later. And it, and so, and part of that's gonna depend on who the per candidate is and what their availability timeframe is.
Gotcha.
My thought is that, it's like, and I think at least that's in line with here, that I think we're looking to have this figured out in what, within three weeks, maybe two?
I think we'll have it decided within two.
And then we get to, then, then it's negotiating the deal?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then that's gonna take a certain amount of time. And then when that, when the negotiation's finished, then it's how soon could someone start? When does it make sense for someone to start in the world?
I, so I, one of the reasons I asked, besides the employment aspect of it, was I didn't know if there was gonna be a big push for the town to try to get somebody, in fact, before the town, annual town meeting. Because I, I did tell Mary Lou and the crew that I was available starting on June 7th. And they, she, they saw right through it.
They started laughing at you?
They started laughing at me. But I think, I think I impressed them with that because they're like, oh, this guy's okay.
At least he knew what day our show was. It shows a little bit of forethought.
Exactly. I, I was just curious. I, I didn't know if, you know, you've got a, a work group already working on articles and, and all that fun stuff.
I'm not speaking for myself. While my thought is it would be nice if the new town administrator could be at the town meeting to see and be seen, my thought is that if we hired them for them, they would not be very, they would be more
They would hardly be part of it.
And not very contributory to the, to the meeting just because they're new.
That's fair. I mean, that, that's very fair, actually, I would say.
Yeah, if anything, we'd like to have them in, that person in the door prior to the meeting just so that they get to have the training wheel meeting where they didn't have
Yeah, yeah. I think that's fair too. Yeah.
I mean, my thought is just that it's like we've, need, we need, we want someone in here so that as we get close to closing out the year, that make sure that's, that the departments are reminded, don't forget to number your funds. It's like, I mean, the accountant is generally good about letting people know things and all that, but just staying on top of, that everyone's doing their, is working towards getting the year closed out.
Yep.
Yeah, if we were expecting the new town administrator to have played a role in one town meeting, then the day we got the last town administrator's resignation, we would have been searching for an interim and had that person in place by now.
Yeah.
So, which probably hindsight being 2020 is what we should have, but that's a story for another day.
And I thought I was out of preparing budgets when I was elected to select board and left minutes committee behind.
Well, I, I figured that's why we didn't talk about getting an interim town administrator, was you missed it.
I do like me good spreadsheet.
You love it, Tom.
We do love you a good spreadsheet.
Yeah. I don't think I have anything else. I don't know if you got, the only thing I did wanna do, and I know I had provided Charlie some references as far as phone calls go, but I did bring letters. I, I mean, you didn't ask, but I thought, you know, there are three separate letters.
Oh, are these three from
Three separate, yeah. I didn't bring, I didn't bring nine cop, or three, six, nine, yeah. I, I just wanted you to have them for, for whatever it's worth. Because I didn't know if after the fact you'd say, hey, by the way, we, we need three references. So I said, hey, lead them off. I tried. You know, you, you try to plan for everything and, you know.
And then reality says, this way.
Correct. Usually. But no, I, I have no further questions. Thank you. I would just thank you for, for having me here and thank the townspeople for those that are gonna watch this tonight. And, and thank your, your committee, your, your screening committee. I got a very good vibe from them, by the way. Not that I'm not getting one from you. I, I went home and told my wife, I said, you know, Brookfield's got it going on. And I'm not just saying that. I, I said, all five of them were just like easy to speak, speak with, speak to. And I know you guys have a job to do as well, but, you know, it was
I just wanna publicly comment that, that your presence tonight is even more impressive than your first interview. You're just, you just seem to be more personal with these three. I don't know if that's the function of these three people or what, but I just wanted to
Second time's a charm. Thank you. I, I
It's Brad's boy's charm. It makes everyone
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. Maybe they're laughing at my answers. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Likewise. Hopefully we'll see you again.
Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome. And so in a few weeks, you'll have done all your stuff and yay or nay, I'll hear from somebody and
Absolutely.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good to have a chance to talk to you.
Thank you. Likewise. I hope you Good luck with the
Thank you.
You're welcome. With the upstairs town meeting. With the upstairs, we have a big redo of our cable TV thing and, you know. We converted them to an enterprise fund though. Do you guys have any enterprise funds? For water or sewer or any of that stuff?
We do not have any enterprise funds. I guess the ambulance has a revenue account. They, they are self-funded.
Yes, yeah.
Which I don't, I don't think they're enterprise funded.
Similar to, yeah, yeah. It's an accounting, it's an accounting thing, you know.
Yeah. They don't, the town budget doesn't fund them.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's interesting stuff. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adios.
Yep. We got, we got five, we got five minutes before the next candidate's move will arrive.
Tenant with a broken refrigerator.
That was the delivery companies.
You gotta deal with that. Not the right night for it. All right, down. Five minute recess. Please stand by. What's that? We didn't recess, so I would leave it running. It's like, and just, but, but, yeah, it's just, for those of you at home, we got five minutes before the next candidate comes. We're taking a short break, but we're not recessing.
I can tell you, you didn't send us any ballots.
No.
I was telling you, the committee did its job, so thank you.
It was a much wider selection than the previous, which is very different to me.
That's because the job's been established. Even right rock or different, good, bad or ugly, the fact that it's now been twice and exists and it is a job, it's very different.
And we had six candidates that I thought were certainly really good. And then these three, still, and then even, even other three, it just depends on the day, I think, as far as.
That's how it always is with, with the day. It's always the day.
Yeah, I think the ball run guy, I think he, he is a little bit more reserved than that.
And I think it's Friday night. It's the end of the week. He's tired.
Nope, I'm not running. Town administrator.
You're sure?
You're not? I keep, I keep joking that this is my retirement job.
You know what's funny? I, I was thinking the same thing. I'm like, when I'm done, this would be a nice, like, maybe not in this town.
Someone, someone brought that up though. It was, Bruce Clark was talking to someone who, who was like a former big wig somewhere. He said, I think I'm gonna retire. I'm just gonna put my hat in for the town administrator. And he had no, no experience or anything else, but he says, I'm gonna retire.
Yeah.
And Bruce said he was offended because he said, it takes a lot to, you know.
Right. The other reason, the other reason why I'm saying it would be a retirement job for me is because in the number of years I've been doing like science, select board and finance committee and our advisory committee and.
Well, I mean, all, all of these people, that's really their major qualification.
I mean, after nine years.
The ball run guy, I mean, he, I, I basically grilled him on, on budget stuff just because that was my question for the group.
Well, especially with his accountant, especially with his accountant.
First candidate.
See, his personality didn't come out this time as much though, unfortunately.
Once I get the address, he said, oh, when you pull the driveway, you can see it. It's like, perfect.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I just didn't wanna get there and find out it was big like Hamilton and if they were way in back. It's like, I wouldn't know where, it's like, yeah, no, but it's like, that was what I was worried about. So, that's why I said, I want you to tell me where to, where I should look for you. It's like, okay. But yeah, if it's small, that's fine.
There you go. I'm just gonna say, see what the ball guy looks like. I never got the chance to talk to him, but I just wanna see what he looks like.
Fair enough.
Candidate, candidate number three. Belcher Town. It's like, he's on the select board in Belcher Town. He's gotta be from there.
Yes, indeed.
Well, let's see. Actually, yeah, May 20, 2021 to present.
He looks like more of a sucker than we are.
Yep. This would be like if you went on the board like 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Or more.
Right.
And stayed on for another couple decades.
Finance committee seems to be definitely a trap to select board.
Well, so actually, when I ran the first time, so you know the story of like my, my very dubious history, right?
That you're not a straight shooter?
Yeah, well, that too. But I don't fly straight.
Was that the one?
Yeah, I don't fly straight. So, and I, and, and the first time you put that on the board, I said, I took a picture of my shoes and said, you know, I prefer the term comfortable shoes to, doesn't fly straight, but that's just, it's just me. But, anyhow. First time I ran, nobody pulled papers for select. And both me and Linda were writing candidates. And I actually, I, I literally knew. So, I had lived in town for a number of years. I had just bought my house right in the center of town. I had walked in to find out why my tax bill tripled, like basically the day after I bought my house because they hadn't adjusted the, the valuation on my house.
In 30 years.
In like 30 years, basically, right. And then because I bought the house, so that popped up, right? Had actually fixed it, right? And there were people screeching at each other in the town hall. It was the former treasurer and the former accountant screeching at each other in the town hall.
What year was this? Like 2014, 2015?
Oh, God. It must have been, 12, it must have been 2012. I moved to Brookfield in 2005, but I live south of the river in a rental property.
When did you move up here?
I think it was either 2011 or 2012 I bought.
Oh, I thought it was longer than that.
Yeah. But, and so I ran. I, I was on speaking terms with like eight people in this town and I got like 200 votes. Because I wasn't Linda.
Tom beat me.
And then.
I did. It's like, I was like, yes.
And then, um. And then the following year, I ran against, I, I was on the finance committee for a year. And then I ran against Stephen Contra and I lost by three votes. And, and I just stayed on the, I stayed on the advisory committee for two out of the three years of his term, but they actually refused to reappoint me my last year because I had challenged something about the, what the accountant was doing relative to certain accounts between us and school. Not this accountant, but the Betty accountant.
That, two accountants ago.
Yeah, Saint Betty. And because I challenged Saint Betty, I wasn't reappointed to advisory for a year. And then I ran, I was gonna run against Steve again and he withdrew his papers.
Is that when the, you started to come out?
My understanding is he, he withdrew from the race right after the, the.
Video came out.
He's driving, video.
Of his 14-year-old kid, yeah. Yeah. So, so that's, but yeah, so, so, but when I didn't win, people told me, you need to get on advisory and figure out your head from your butt relative to municipal finance and what's different between like public corporations and municipal government. So, I took the advice and I did. Cause I like math. I do math.
I like, I like math, but that's definitely a weak point of mine.
Oh, it's municipal finance. Have you gone to the class?
Uh, yeah, and I'm one of those people, if I do it a few times, then it's like very solid ingrained, yeah.
Yeah. But, but, but yeah, so that was, so, and then I've just kinda stayed on since.
I'd be better if they did, and I don't know if they do. Do they do an in-person class, in-person class or is it?
It is an in-person class, the DLS class.
No, I did an online one.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, cause you probably came on after like COVID and all that greatness.
It's now, that's how they push it as online.
I think they still have a one face-to-face one that's usually after the spring election.
And I went to MMA, they didn't really have anything there for it either.
Really?
Then I was hoping they would have.
Cause it, they usually do one.
Yeah, just, just to make sure we don't break into discussing any business. Cause we're just chit-chatting and I know that it can fall out of mind.
Chit-chatting is fine.
Yeah, not chit-chatting. I know about chit-chatting.
Laughing about my history of why I even do this. And I keep, I keep joking, that first time I ran, I, there were eight people in town that were talking to me and my goal is to have about the same eight people still talking to me by the time I'm done.
Well, you, you didn't have to have me talking to you before. You worked me onto the finance committee.
I mean, for a while, I thought I was definitely gonna be done and I think I'm calloused enough that I would go and go again for second round.
You would go again. Would do again. Oh, that would be bad. That would be very sad.
That would, that would reflect poorly on me versus 915.
That's true. I, I wouldn't be sad if the meeting was earlier. I'm a little surprised.
I'm surprised. He was very responsive, love.
I checked my email. I didn't see anything.
I wonder if that, I wonder if that.
Oh, yeah, the phone number probably works.
Phone number on his resume.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
You want me to call him?
Yeah, why don't you, you got, you let them hear from, sort of along that path, haven't you?
My phone's unlocked. That's about as far as I've gotten. I just wanna, before we.
Yeah, if he's, if he's not coming, then he's not coming. It's like, if he's gonna be here in a few minutes, he'll be here in a few minutes. I was gonna say, and he was, he met with you guys in person before, so he's driven here before. Yeah, so it's like, okay, so it's online.
Yeah, I mean, we met at the police station, but the electrician.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's same, same, same driving duration from Belcher Town.
Oh, well, we're shorter than the other. Hi, Mr. Repati. Beth Coughlin from the Brookfield Board of Selectmen. Pretty good. Oh, is the door locked?
Oh, you know, I thought I heard it pop. I meant to tell you to go check it again, cause I heard it, like, you aren't even going in and out. All of a sudden, I heard a pop out there and it sounded like that's what it was.
Oh, like the lock clicked.
Yeah, yeah. That, this, issue with, there's an issue with that door, I think. Sometimes it pops like that.
I mean, I missed that.
If you have a key, if you have a key, is there a way to make this so you can turn it so it's all locked with a key? Like, I physically have the key to the door. Can I turn it?
Oh, turn the lock so it doesn't shut?
I don't think the key will permanently unlock it. I think the key can only delatch it so it opens. And then the only way to get it to stay unlocked is to push the bar and then use.
But if you notice during the day, that door doesn't shut all the way. And I don't know if they do something to it so it stays open a little bit, so it doesn't, in case it does pop.
I'll ask Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should definitely have that looked at, cause that, we don't want, that's, it's not good that the front door locks when the building's supposed to be open and.
No, and it's, it's, I've, I've come here.
About the side door, but.
I've come here at 11 a.m. and it be locked.
Yeah.
But I mean, Karen's usually right there.
But also at that time, it's like if you know that the side door with the ramp, with handicap access, that needs to be open when the building's open also.
Yeah.
But if you don't know it's there, it's just sort of like.
I didn't even think of unlocking that until he mentioned unlock the side door and I'm like, what are you talking about?
When I came in, I checked the side door, just to see if it was unlocked. I don't need, I don't need an OML complaint.
Yeah.
Jeff, did you lock our candidate out?
I hope we didn't end up in North Brookfield.
No, he's, um, we think, we think the door locked.
No, but he's, he's not out there and she's talking to him and he said, well, I'm at the town offices. We don't have a town office. And the old place has a town office, I think it's North.
Oh, maybe he went down to the police station.
Okay.
Is that where you guys met? Is that where you guys were meeting with him?
Yeah.
She'll figure it out.
I'm sure.
It's like, it's like Google, navigate to Sixth Central Street in Brookfield.
Right. Oh, you heard that? That's what she told him. She said, it's Sixth.
No, I know. It's like, well, that's what, I mean, it's like, that's the simplest thing. It's like, get your navigation going. Give it this destination and drive and have it guide you there. It's like, and then you're.
I thought, I thought you were doing a, a mind meld with her because that's exactly what she said when she was out there, talking to her.
Well, in mine, actually, if you put in my address, it brings you down to the bottom of the hill. It doesn't bring you up the hill.
Taking me the long way down one-way streets, three times in a row in Worcester. You can believe that. That's what I thought. That's what I said. The town offices in Brookfield.
So, he can be here in 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Are we gonna make? Are we gonna stick it out or do we wanna reschedule?
I would rather stick it out.
Okay, we're gonna stick it out. If you, if you're still willing, we'll, we'll wait for you.
I'd rather not have to mobilize again.
Okay. Okay, great. Thanks. Yep, bye.
Well, good thing you called, Beth.
It's in North Brookfield. He's probably interviewing for both positions. And must have crossed up which one he was supposed to be at tonight. Cause they're looking for a town administrator too.
They are.
Yeah.
And actually.
Well, that's fair. You can, you can interview him.
I had met with one of the select board members and it was something I wanted to talk about for a future agenda. They approached me about tapping into their sewer system. There's inter-municipal grants that are available.
Oh.
To interconnect sewer systems?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But when I was talking to him, he goes, any interest in splitting a town administrator? I'm like, I think you guys have a lot to clean up before, that you might use up all our town administrator.
That was, that was a nicer thing you said than when I, when I made a reference to the schools in Spencer to someone who lived in Spencer. Does anyone know when Bertium and Durant have their office hours here in town?
No. And actually, that was something I wanted to talk to Karen about, was letting us know when that happens.
Yes. Well, I mean, it's like.
But his, but his, but his, but his guy keeps reaching out to me on.
I did talk to him.
Did you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, it's not on our agenda, so.
No, there, there, there are a couple of things I wanna, it's like, it's, oh, it, so it occurred to me, yeah, it might not be bad to talk to them.
Let's put it on an agenda about what we wanna talk to him about and tell him to come.
All right. I'll see if we can squeeze that in on, uh, May 2nd. It's kind of public discussion, open, open meeting.
And I don't know if you, I don't know if you wanna, but the conversation that I had with the select board member about the sewer, do you wanna?
Put that on there, yeah.
Put it on that. I mean, I can just tell you in five minutes, the conversation we had.
Yeah, that's fine. Invite, um, we should probably invite Dennis there just so they, or you should share with him. Okay.
Uh, I, I, I can talk, I can talk to him offline.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I just, I just thought it'd be good. I guess I'd say either, I would, I would recommend that you talk to him in advance or invite him to be around when we have that discussion. I just don't want him thinking that we're discussing something that's in his domain without involving him.
Yeah.
It's just a courtesy. Ladies and gentlemen, the excitement of town government. Feel it.
I'm sure Jacob's gonna edit all this part out.
I don't know if he, I don't know if he legally can. Unless we, unless we go into recess.
Oh, if you don't go into recess.
Cause we're technically, we are in session and he, and I don't think it, it should be the, I don't think he should be cutting out stuff in session. He might wanna put something on there saying, nothing happens, it's like.
Well, anyone watching, I already got so bored that they shut it off.
You can jump ahead to this point and it won't mean anything and those, those who don't trust us will watch it and they will get to watch us like it's been planned. And those who take advice will jump ahead and skip this.
Yeah, but what about that secret meeting we had in the hall?
I do hope people watch this because someone asked me to get my, my select meeting like three days.
Chris Kellner's gone rogue here tonight, please, thank you. Chris Keller's gone rogue here tonight, please, thank you.
I watch it.
Mr. Keller?
Yes. Hey, we're in recess, aren't we now in recess?
We are not in recess. We are in session.
How many dogs do you have?
Seven.
Seven? Not all the same size. Because you have two big ones, right?
Six of them are big dogs.
Really?
Yeah, they were, they were feisty last night. I heard them barking when I left here.
They were being really bad. They were being really bad last night. Very bad dogs.
We lost our dog last, uh, Good Friday.
It's too bad.
Yeah. The worst part about losing a dog is having children when you lose a dog, and they keep revisiting it.
Yeah.
It drags on the grief. That is a lot of dog food.
It's less than you would think.
Really?
They're actually very easy keepers. Because they're bred to work, you know, that, most of what, most of the dogs that I have are bred to work sheep, and if they're not actually do, at that level of activity.
So, they like, I mean, I know, I have friends that have liked the Australian Shepherds, and they're, they need to run a lot.
Yeah. Mine are pretty good, in that they're a tending breed rather than, so Australian Shepherds are a driving breed.
Right, right.
And so they're always moving.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the type of dogs that I have actually, um, control the sheep with their presence, so they are much better at standing in one place and looking noble.
Mm-hmm.
Than anything else, so. I mean, don't get me wrong, they're active dogs, and like, like the puppy, right now, we have a puppy, and he needs a certain amount of like ball fetch.
Mm-hmm.
Like, do-stuff time.
Yeah.
But they also know how to do nothing.
Yeah.
So.
My dog was excellent at doing nothing. We had a golden retriever.
You have, you have our new dog.
No, I haven't.
Interesting. Seven years old.
Oh, wow.
And the default position is to go out.
Oh, dear.
Oh, I can take.
You gotta love it.
Yeah. I'm used to my dogs ignoring the boats, not paying any attention to them. This one pays attention to the fishermen.
Are the boats already out? Our boat's already out on the lake.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, the minute it gets warm.
Is the ice, has the ice melted?
Yeah.
Heck, sometimes before the ice melts.
Then, then they're ice fishing. It's only when the ice is there, but not thick enough, people not really fish.
Yeah. Well, I saw people like ice, they had the ice sailing.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Oh, on Quebec Pond?
On, on, yeah, on South Pond.
I believe it was only once or twice on North Pond this year.
Yeah, I saw it a couple of times, yeah.
That was like, the, the following week there, it disappeared.
Yeah, the following week, the ice was gone, but, but they did have a pretty good crowd on South Pond.
Yeah, go up there.
That's because that's the, that's the, uh, that's the duck pond. I mean, that's not, it's shallow enough that it freezes.
It's an overgrown bog, basically, it's supposed to, does it disappear in how many years? If you don't know.
We were up in, uh, going up into Vermont. I mean, those people, when they ice fish, it looks like, you know, they'll, they'll be ice fishing like on a little island of ice. What is that?
I don't see anybody doing that. Oh, I think it's, it's, I think it's a police.
Sounds like a delivery truck.
It's a truck down by the high, down by police. Almost looks like a flatbed from Highway Eight, but I can't tell. The window's just a little distorted, looking at it at a sharp angle.
And then he's the rest, so I don't find him having.
Um, with regards to the open position, uh, the open grant writer position, uh, I believe we've received, um, resumes. Do we want, when do we want to start discussing the, uh, the candidates for the permanent, uh, permanently holding that position? It's like, do we, do we wanna get started soon, or try and squeeze it in around the budget stuff, or just punt it until June?
I would talk to Kathy if you could. She, we might be.
I would tell you that it needs to be some middle ground between punting to June and doing it right this minute, so.
I mean, it's, I'm just thinking that May second.
I would say not May second, but it's probably worth trying to get together the week of May twelve.
But I, I think she's got all the, I think Kathy has all the current projects.
No, I, I, I think things are, I don't need a discussion, I, I don't, I don't think there's an immediate urgency to filling it, and we do have an interim in that position.
I would like to fill in prior to town meeting.
Okay, then.
Yeah, no, I'd like to fill it, yeah.
We may need to meet on the ninth to do that. We'll, I will schedule it for the second, and then we'll see where things are. If it looks like the sixteenth is good, we'll talk about it then. If we need to pull it forward, we'll pull it forward.
Oh, and in the police union, I got an email today, either the twenty-sixth or twenty-ninth, we're gonna have our next mediation date.
Uh, in May?
No, in April.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's Friday or Monday.
Alright.
Okay. Hey, apologies!
That's alright.
My fault, you guys, I'm sorry.
How are you? Brad, nice to meet you.
Yeah, you're good. Good to speak with you.
This is the hot seat? No, over here with the microphone.
Well, I'd like to, thank you guys for, uh, staying a little, a little later on a Friday for me. Appreciate that.
No worries. We got, uh, we met with two candidates and we want to be with the third, and that way we can, we, we can come from up.
That's right, that's right, okay.
Alright, so let's get started. Uh, tell us about yourself.
Uh, well, as you can see from my cover letter and resume, I'm certainly a non-traditional applicant, in that I have nearly three decades of management experience in the private sector. Two decades of management in the municipal sector, specifically with Belcher Town. But the, the combination actually I've found to be pretty good for the simple fact that I, I'm able to utilize a lot of the same skill sets, and it kind of reinforces them, if you will. Things I've learned at work in the private sector, I'm able to use in municipal sector and so on and so forth. So, I mean, budgeting, personnel, uh, forecasting, capital planning, uh, all, all of these types of things, I've, I've done numerous times. Budgeting, I mean, honestly, with, uh, when you include my finance committee, uh, which is another eight years of experience, I've probably done the better part of twenty-five budgets. Municipal budgets, not even including the, the private sector ones. So, I, it, you know, with that, with that skill set, I think it's, it's pretty unique, that I can bring it to bear, uh, as a town administrator, and I would love the opportunity.
Okay. Alright, well, let's kick off, let me kick off the questions. Um, to, to my mind, there is a, uh, the, the role of town administrator has a couple of legs under it. That are, are skill sets that support it. And, uh, to my mind, those are, there's financial, there's legal, there's personnel in the supervisory sense. And I will, and, and may, and maybe a customer service one dealing with the, uh, and so, I would say, how do you, um, how would you, um, rank your skills or ability in those? From, uh, best to, uh, still pretty good, but the, not the best?
Well, I mean, personnel, definitely, that's, that's probably more forte, uh, because of all the management experience, once again, private sector, public sector. Uh, so I would say I'm, I'm pretty strong in that. A lot of, a lot of experience, uh, with regards to that, performance reviews, uh, even disciplinary, uh, hiring, um, interviewing, that types of stuff. Very familiar with it, lots of experience in that. Uh, legal aspect, um, well, being on, on the select board, uh, you're just through osmosis. You, you start to pick up a lot of the master general laws, and you know, what can, you know, be a chapter thirty B for procurement, uh, the, the chapters for forestry land and recreational land, things along those lines. So, you definitely pick up a, a lot of that. But I think I'm also, I guess, aware enough of the fact, when I'm outside of my comfort zone, and when it's time to pick up the phone and talk to town council. Because, you know, obviously, if you, if you've got, if you go down the, the wrong route, so to speak, or wrong path, you could get yourself and your town in a lot of trouble. So, when in doubt, it's not a bad idea to go talk to town council.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what were the other ones?
Uh, let's see, I would say, uh, finance and customer service.
Well, finance, as I said, I mean, tons and tons of, of budgeting, um, been through several bondings as well with Belcher Town for, uh, high school and elementary school. Also, um, we've done some consolidated type, uh, capital, um, purchases, that we were able to consolidate into a bond when the interest rates were, were very, very low. Uh, we found that to be very helpful. So, from a financial aspect, once again, very, very comfortable with that, lots of experience doing that. So, I, I would rate myself fair, you know, fairly high with regards to that. And as far as customer service, I mean, I, I guess being a, a selectman was the ultimate in customer service. If I, if I didn't do my job correctly, I wasn't getting voted back in. In fact, I used to even say, you know, if people would say, oh, you know, you're gonna get in trouble if you just, you know, say yes or, or no for this particular issue. It's like, well, I'm gonna do what I think is best for the town of Belcher Town, and if the people disagree, well, they're gonna give me a performance review in three years. They're not gonna vote for me and, you know, the, the writing be on the wall. Well, you know, knock on wood, I, I won seven terms, so I guess I was doing a few things right.
Okay.
So, I would say, once you get strong, strong with regards to customer service.
Thank you.
Brad? Um, what's your experience in working with intermunicipal agreements, and what's your approach to regionalization?
Yeah, well, actually, with regionalization, uh, Belcher Town is a, um, part of the regional, uh, district for Pathfinder, for vocational training. And, uh, we're actually, Belcher Town's actually the largest component or member of that, so very familiar with that, um, the, it's, it's a different type of collaboration, if you will. Uh, because the way the charter was set up with Pathfinder, it took a super majority, in, in other words, to, to override anything, like say a school committee would do. So, you quickly found out that was very difficult. So, what you would end up doing is saying, okay, I'm not gonna wait till the end. If, if there's something that we think will really benefit Belcher Town, we gotta start the process early. And we gotta get, talk to the superintendent, we gotta talk to the, uh, the supervisor of, of the school. We have to talk to them very early on, so that we can start to, to build towards that. So, it, it never reaches the point where we have to try to get, you know, four or five other towns to try to vote with us to, to get something to, to pass that the school committee didn't want. So, very aware of that. Um, as far as, uh, intermunicipal agreements, we, we have several of them. Actually, we, we even have them with UMass. For everything from, you know, public safety, um, um, emergency management, things along those lines. Uh, we've, um, actually, literally, within about a month's time, actually, maybe a little more than a month's time, our police and fire dispatch is gonna be out of Wilbraham. And we just finished the, uh, the agreement with Wilbraham, so that they, we can regionalize that. Tremendous savings for, for us as well.
You board, Belcher Town borders Wilbraham?
Uh, yeah, about that much.
Alright, no.
Yeah, but it's only for dispatch purposes. It's like ours is out of, it's kind of like, ours is out of New Braintree, and we don't border New Braintree, but dispatch is out of there.
It's, yeah, I just never thought they were that close, but it's like, okay. But it makes sense that, yeah, this is, this is, this lends, this lends itself more to a, uh, this type of arrangement than say sharing a truck between DPWs.
True, abso- absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um. Couple of different things I want to ask you about.
Sure.
Okay. One is, um, where do you view the town administrator role as kind of fit in, in terms of? Kind of the, the town departments, the finance team, the select board, like, what do you, what's kind of like your vision of this position? And, and like what the intent is and what your intent would be in it?
Sure, I mean, obviously, the select board is the policymaking board, and as such, I feel the town administrator's job is to support the board. Provide as much information, the facts, the details, and if asked, opinion. If, if you all ask, uh, my opinion as town administrator, and she's, you know, what's your feeling about this particular issue? I think it's incumbent upon myself to say, I'm in favor of it or against it, and here's the reasons why. But once I've done that, I've put my two cents in, if you will, and if the board decides, well, you said no, we're gonna say yes. My job at that point is to say, alright, I, I hear you. It is now my job as town administrator to do anything and everything in my power to implement that to the best of my ability. And that, I think it, it actually goes a step further, because that very next day, depending on the, the size and scope of the particular issue, gather your department heads and direct reports and say, okay. We discussed it last night, the board wants to do this. And even if everyone's, oh, I thought we weren't gonna do that, we didn't wanna, no, we're gonna do that. And my job at that point, even though maybe I was, I was against it, is to champion the decision of the, the policy board and say, we're gonna implement this, and we're gonna implement this to the best of our ability. And I think that's the type of thing, I mean, certainly something in the private sector I've, I've had to do, where, you know, my, my VP or my CIO would come up with a decision, and I'm thinking, oh my gosh, how the heck are we ever gonna do that?
That never happens.
Yeah. And it's like, okay, well, this, guess what, I've got my marching orders, and now I had to sell it to, to my guys, and they, you know, they might be doing the same thing, but then, okay. We got all our gripes out of the way, let's go make it happen, and make it happen to our best of our ability. So, I see the, the town administrators being a key link there, to be a champion, if you will, of implementing whatever decisions and policies that the board, uh, the board makes.
My second question, because I've done this one as kind of a not related, but two-part question.
Sure.
Is, good turnover, bad turnover? Describe.
Good turnover, bad turn- I, I'm assuming you're, you're, you're not talking patriots, we're, we're talking employees.
No, every turnover is a bad turnover, if, if we're talking about the patriots. Yeah, I'm talking about personnel turnover specifically.
Sure, I mean, I, I, I think a problem there, bad turnover would be, um, employees are not satisfied. And, you know, are they not satisfied with working conditions, with the, the pay, um, with the appreciation perhaps from, from management? I think it's incumbent, when you do start to see turnover, and frankly, I'm a firm believer in any turnover, that an exit interview occur. And, you know, ho- hopefully, the employee at that point is gonna be relatively forthright, and explain why they're leaving. Oh, I mean, they might be leaving just because, well, you know what, my, my parents are ill and we're moving out to Wisconsin to help take care of them. Well, okay, there's not a lot we can do there. On the flip side, you might start to hear a common theme, well, well, you know, I, I got an extra fifteen thousand dollars over here, or we weren't appreciated at all. And, you know, as a result, I'm moving over to, to another job, where in another town or another company, that we are appreciated. That's bad turnover. That's bad turnover because you've got a problem, some type of a systemic problem in the organization, and it behooves you to, one, identify it. And two, come up with a resolution for that. You have to come up with a game plan, because if not, that's just gonna continue to feed. It's gonna be like a cancer, just eating at the, the organization. Now, as far as good to, turnover, I guess that's probably a case where, and it's, you know, almost inherent in a small town. If you have strong, talented, hard-working people, will never be able to pay as much as Worcester, or Springfield, or even like a Northampton, or something along those lines. And you start to lose good people, because now they're, they're expanding, if you will, to other areas that are larger, and even in the private sector, I mean, certainly in, in DPW. That's, that's a, a risk that's always there. There's skill sets that DPW employees will have, that's certainly transferable to, to different, uh, private sector positions. So, that's a, I guess, I'll even put it in quotes, good turnover. It's good because you have good people, and they've been trained well, and they're doing good jobs. But because of that, they almost kind of outgrow a, a small town and what a small town is, is able to, to do. But I think the. But I think the silver lining, if you will, with that is whatever made that employee a good employee, hopefully, that is systemic in the organization through training, through recognition, through teamwork, camaraderie, that type of stuff. Then you say, okay, maybe we lost good employee A, but we have employee B, and we think we can grow employee B to be every bit as good as employee A, and just kind of keep that chain rolling. So I guess that's how I would see good turnover versus bad turnover.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, I would, I already asked that question. What would you see as the, what do you think, what do you see as the challenges and the difficulties facing a person who takes on this role?
Well, I think obviously a key probably can be said for just about any small town in Massachusetts is economic growth. A lot of your revenue stream is coming through the taxpayer, and that's just going to continue. One of the good things is you all don't really have a lot of state aid, you're not really very dependent upon state aid, because heaven knows the state is not doing well, and state aid is not going to increase, and it's certainly not going to keep the rate with, at the inflation rate.
Actually, we're highly dependent on state aid.
Excuse me?
We're highly dependent on state aid.
Really? Because I, when I was looking in the DLS report, it looked like you guys were around 30% or so of your revenue.
Fifty percent, I think.
No, it's 30%.
Is it 30%?
The, it's, the aid, the aid is about 3 million, but the offsets and the expenses drop to about 2.6 million.
That's where they get you.
I've been living this.
Yeah, I was thinking, I always think of it because it's, because only half, only half is property taxes, but our local receipts is 10.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Local receipts is another million. It's like, the levy is about 60% of our budget, and the school is 50% of the budget. School takes 50, the school's 50% of our taxes.
So in that regard, you all are doing, I mean, certainly better in Belchertown.
Well, that's true.
One of the things that's killed in Belchertown right now, frankly, is the fact that Belchertown's a lot more dependent upon state aid, and state aid just is not there. And it's certainly, like I said, not increasing even close to the inflation rate. So I guess kudos to you all and to the department heads and the financial management team. So with that being said, if you really want to continue to keep up with the inflation rate, you want to be able to increase programs and capital items and things along those lines, then you have to grow your business tax base. And once again, that's, just about every small town in Massachusetts can say the same thing. Now, one of the things I think that is certainly a plus is the fact that you all have, are an economic target area. And by being an economic target area, that opens up a lot of different financial incentives that you might be able to offer. So not only, in fact, in Belchertown, that was one of the things that has certainly helped us, is we became, well, we kind of piggybacked on with where to have a designated economic target area. And as such, we are able to keep two businesses, local businesses that were expanding, we were able to keep them within the town, but also with the former state school land, we're able to offer tax incentives, TIFs, tax incremental financing, to attract, you know, because if you think about it, the way I've always tried to tell, you know, my fellow selectmen is, we're a business in regards to trying to pull in businesses and that economic growth. We have to differentiate ourselves from everybody else. And how do we market ourselves so that we do stick out and say, hey, come, you know, come relocate to our town? And like I said, with you all having that economic target area, you can offer some of those tax incentives. So now, when that business owner is looking and saying, hmm, okay, that's a lot more interesting, you know, let's take a good, hard look at that. So now you're kind of going to the top of the stack. So that's obviously a big plus, because that's where you want to be, because it is very, very competitive out there. So I think that's a key there. I would take that and really run with it for the simple fact that would help differentiate yourself from all the other contiguous and comparable towns. So that was one thing, I mean, as town administrator, I would certainly try to run with that.
Thank you.
So one of the things that we're going through as a change with the town is the new marijuana legislation, and we're just starting with that. And I guess my question to you is, what experience do you have with marijuana legislation in Belchertown, and how is that?
Yep, we actually have one dispensary. We've probably had seven, maybe eight, that have kind of gone through the process, so to speak.
Yeah.
But one of the things we did early on is we set up a zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
And literally took exactly what we had, or I don't say exactly, but 90 to 95% of what we had for, say, liquor stores. And we just superimposed that and said, okay, let's do that for cannabis. Obviously, just because of the legislation, you're going to make some tweaks here and there, but that's kind of the mindset we had. And it's been very much accepted in town by the townspeople, even, you know, folks that were dead set against the law. But once it became law, one of the things, as a selectman, I had to convince them is, it is the law. So they can do this legally. If we try to force them out, that's going to open up, you know, probably some lawsuits, and it's going to end up costing us more money. So let's try to manage this and manage this properly. And that's why I said, let's start with a zoning bylaw. We have something on the books that people are comfortable with, you know, how we address liquor licenses and liquor stores. Bring that forward, that passed with that town meeting. And then, obviously, what you want to do with your, I mean, there are so many i's to dot and t's to cross with regards to these agreements. You just have to make sure that you do that. And that's one of those cases where absolutely, you want to make sure you have town council looking over your shoulder.
You've lived through that movie, it sounds like.
Yes.
Oh, he has the t-shirt.
So, I mean, that's basically the game plan that we've had at Belchertown. It's been successful. Like I said, unfortunately, only one of them has really gone from A to Z.
Yeah.
We've had several that have gone from A to Q or A to S.
So you're more experienced than us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So usually, people ask you in a job interview, what is your greatest accomplishment? Right? But I'm going to flip the, flip the switch on that one.
Sure.
Tell me about your most glorious failure.
Well, actually, I'll, because I probably have a few of them in the private sector, I'll stick to the public sector.
You can pick either, it doesn't matter.
Okay, I'll go with the public one, because it's also fairly recent. We had a long-term town administrator, literally been in town administrator for 30 years. And he was a very strong personality, but very, I used to say, when he, when you caught him, he led black and orange, truth are their team colors in Belchertown. And a new group came on the select board, and they didn't necessarily like the fact that he wasn't a yes man. And as such, they were not going to, all, I mean, truly, out of the blue, they said, they, we had an executive session with regards to his contract, which was coming up for renewal. And all of a sudden, there was three of them that said, yeah, we don't think we're going to renew his contract. I mean, literally, I was shocked. It was like.
How many member?
Five, five member, yeah. And I, what's the problem? I said, I'm not aware of an issue here, what's the issue? No one could tell me what the issue was or the problem was. Because my theory was, well, okay, if there's a problem, I mean, who knows, maybe I'm blind to it. Let's identify the problem, and then let's talk to him about it and come up with some type of game plan so that we can resolve it. And, you know, especially coming completely out of the blue with all my management experience, I was like, you know, this just doesn't smell right. Bottom line, what it came down to is a man with 30, very dedicated, like I said, black and orange years as town administrator, didn't have his contract renewed. Or actually, technically, it was extended six months. And then he was unceremoniously pushed out the door. And there really wasn't a darn thing I could do about it for the simple fact, because a lot of it was occurring during executive session, and as such, you can't talk about it publicly. In fact, since he wasn't even in on it, at least originally, I couldn't even discuss it with him until the bombshell was dropped. And, I mean, that still, to this day, just leaves a bad taste in my mouth that a man that worked that hard and did so much for the town didn't get a chance to ride off into the sunset. And there wasn't anything I could do about it when he deserved it so much. And, like I said, it just, ah, just grates on me. Shouldn't have been, shouldn't have been that way.
Okay, thank you. Let me, actually, let me ask a follow-up question on that.
Sure.
What did you, and I know it's an executive session, so you probably still can't share it, but high level, what was your approach to try to, try to work through that?
Excuse me, I first tried to just get them to talk about it, but they wouldn't talk about it in any detail whatsoever.
Huh.
Then I actually reached out to the State Ethics Commission for some guidance, because I said, this is an open meeting law. Is there an open meeting law issue that could potentially be? And as I said, they said, you're going to need some type of documentation, emails, you know, actual memos or notes. And they were smart enough not to have that. They didn't use the, if there was emails, and I suspect there probably were emails that went back and forth, none of them were on the town.
System.
System, so, you know, it reached a point, as the councilor was talking to it, the State Ethics Commission said, do you really want to subpoena AOL and Gmail and Yahoo and so on and so forth to try to get this done? I mean, it's probably not going to work. And unfortunately, I said, no, no, it's, you know, we can't do that. That would, I mean, one, I'm not so sure they would even cooperate for something like this, because there wasn't a law broken per se. This was more, other than, you know, trying to prove an open meeting law. So unfortunately, at that point, I mean, I tried a couple other avenues. I tried to speak to them individually.
Nothing.
Nothing. It was a decision that they made, I think, probably a year or so beforehand, when the third person was elected onto the board. And, and like I said, I said, you know, shame on me, I didn't pick up on that.
Yeah.
But, yeah, as I said, I just never expected anyone to treat them with such disrespect. It was just so unnecessary.
Yeah, seems odd, so.
How, let's see, so, Belchertown has a town administrator. How big is the budget, and how many people work for the town?
Yeah, well.
Not counting the school.
Yeah, schools are separate. The town budget is going to be about 58 million this year. And as far as the town employees, we exclude the schools, we're looking at about 130.
Okay.
That includes DPW, that, everything that would come up through the town administrator. And actually, I got to change it, because about two weeks ago, he became town manager. So he's now town manager.
Are there, are there many employees there that do not, that aren't part of the school but don't report to the town administrator? Like, as an example, here in Brookfield, we have a principal assessor, and that physician reports to the board of assessors.
Okay.
And so the town administrator does not have direct authority with them. The town administrator controls the environment and the offices in which they work, but has no supervision over their work product.
Yep.
We have a lot of elected positions.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And a weak.
A weak town government structure.
Weak town government structure.
Gotcha.
Not weak, distributed authority.
Very flat organization.
Yes.
We do have actually something almost identical to that, but it's actually on the planning side. It's the planning director who reports directly through the elected planning board. Now, that being said, if you've kind of looked at our org chart, there would be a dotted line between the town administrator and the planning director. For a simple fact, there's so many things they have to work together. And there's very good communications between the chairman of the planning board and the town administrator. So, and I think that's probably the best way to do it, is with that type of distributed authority. The town administrator really has to be very, in tight communications and constant two-way dialogue with, you know, in this case, the planning director, I mean, the planning board and the planning director, or in the case of Brookfield, you know, the assessor and the board of assessors. So I think it's probably not preferred, but it can certainly work. I've seen it work fine for many, many years. Once again, with that communication, kind of go in both directions.
Thank you.
How are you with technology and project management?
Oh, boy, that's, that's a softball for me, 30 years IT experience. Yeah, obviously, very, very comfortable with IT. I've managed everything from the desktop to the wide area networks, contracts, obviously personnel, software, hardware, networks, vendor support, things along those lines. I've done all of that. Very, very comfortable.
And what's your approach to project management workflow and stuff like that?
Yeah, well, with project management, the key, I've, you know, obviously done lots of project management, is to make sure you assemble all the key parties. And what I always like to do, kind of, I'll use the private sector. I always had someone in the business community, be it what I refer to as the champion, they're my person who's going to sell it to the organization, the business organization. I'm going to work directly with them, and I'm going to make sure the IT is there to support whatever direction the business is going. I'm a firm believer, even though I'm in the IT world, IT doesn't drive the business, the business should drive IT. IT should support the business. The business people, the line business people are the ones that know what they want to do with the business, and I feel it's IT's job to support whatever decisions and policies they make. So that's kind of the approach that I always take.
Want to drive to East Hartford twice a week? We've got a job for a director of digital strategy down there. Sorry. So I'm going to, in the interest of consistency, and this is a question I picked up from some recent interviews in my day job.
Okay.
You're driving home tonight, zombie apocalypse hits. Tell me what your plan is.
Ooh, the apocalypse, like the zombies are.
Like Walking Dead, like you just walked into the scene as an extra in, you know, on the show Walking Dead. What's your plan?
Well, actually, I mean, maybe not to that extreme, but back with the October snowstorm, was that 2011? Not only was I chairman of the board of selectmen in Belchertown, I was also the emergency manager for my cornerstone, which is a subsidiary of Mass Mutual. So that Sunday morning, as I kind of unburied myself, I came to the realization that, oh my gosh, I have a town that's in a shambles, and I have a company that's going to be in a shambles come tomorrow morning. So I had to kiss my wife on the cheek and say, honey, I'm not sure when you're going to see me next, because I have to get in. And I knew Mass Mutual has several different.
I work within the insurance industry, and several of the carriers were down.
Yeah, and the good thing with Mass Mutual is I knew from, you know, manage, emergency management meetings, I knew they had, like, literally three different feeds going into their data center. So I said, if anyone has power, Mass Mutual does. I'm getting in there. It literally, usually it would take me about a half an hour to get to Mass Mutual, it took me closer to an hour and a half to get there. But I finally made it in there. My first call was actually to our town administrator, the gentleman I was talking about, who was off in the Adirondacks hunting. He went for his annual hunting trip. And I told him, I said, Gary, I said, I'm going to give you the opportunity to say you've never got this phone call, but I said, you are coming back to a disaster. And I said, literally, a disaster, like, the entire town is out, and there are streets that we can't get to yet. And, you know, God, God help Belchertown, thank God, we had Gary there. He said, give me a few hours, I'll be there. But in the meantime, what I did is I called the fire chief, I called our senior center director to open up the senior center for, as a warming place or place that had electricity, because we had generators there, also called the school superintendent, and we set up our high school as really kind of our Noah's Ark, if you will. And we had a lot of generation, external generation power at the high school, because it was our designated area, and we had showers and so on and so forth. So we started to get a lot of that coordinated. And sure enough, here comes, here comes Gary in on his white horse, and I said, okay, I've done what I can do to get the ball rolling. I said, I'm going to trust you can, you can take your ball and run. I said, I'm gonna trust you can, you can take your ball and run with it. I said, 'cause I got about four hundred employees that Monday morning at eight o'clock are gonna be saying, what do we do, Ron? So sure enough, I now get him on the phone, I'm talking to our CEO, and we're setting up all our contingencies, I'm setting up some stuff, and luckily, we were actually based out of Hartford at the time. And, I mean, thank you, God, but our building actually had power. There was a lot of areas.
X equivalent, I know, was out for three weeks.
Oh, wow. Yeah, 'cause, I mean, it's Connecticut.
And Nut Life was down in, uh, in Bloomfield.
Yeah, Connecticut got hit hard, but thank God, because, maybe because it was in downtown Hartford, it, it was still up. So we were able to use that, once again, I guess, as my, my business is Noah's Ark. And we had some of our satellite offices all congregate there, and basically spent Sunday night with a couple of my guys setting up our main conference room and our, our other large conference room, really, is just rows of, of PCs that people could, you know, use as a charging station and get some work done. And it actually went, I mean, very, very smooth, considering the, the issues that, you know, that potentially could have occurred, but it made, it, it, maybe it wasn't the zombie apocalypse, but it was, it was getting close.
It was snowpocalypse, yeah. Been there, lived through that. That's all of my questions.
And it's funny, you answered some of my questions, just in conversation.
I go like that.
Um, I, I have a question to ask.
Sure.
In my, in your experience, having worked in both town government and in the private sector, what do you see as some of the, the main differences between the two, specifically in how they, what they would be for someone in the role of town administrator versus someone in your role as an IT manager in the private sector?
Yeah, I, I guess I would, I would equate the town administrator to really almost kind of being the president or chief operating officer of a, of a private company. And I think probably the biggest thing is the, the transparency. I mean, transparency is set by law, uh, on the municipal side. And it, in the private sector, one of the other big differences was we didn't have to deal with unions. It was a complete non-union from, from A to Z. But with the transparency, in fact, one of the things, as new select board members would join, and if they had management experience in the private sector, I'd try to give them a little orientation, saying, you don't, don't think you can take whatever worked in the private sector and just superimpose it into the municipal sector, because it's not gonna work. You're, you're only gonna get yourself in a lot of trouble. I said, the key there is to learn what you can do and what you can't do. And if you have any questions, ask first. Don't, don't try to force that round peg into the square hole. So I, I, I guess I would say, the, the example I use, in the private sector, you can make a hiring decision, you can make a major policy decision, and it's all gonna happen in your conference room with, you know, a handful of key people, and that decision's gonna come from the top down, and it just gets forced, and it's gonna happen. I mean, people, you may be people in that second layer of management realize why the decision was made or whatever, but it's solely up to upper management whether or not, how much information they want to push down. Obviously, that's not how it works in the municipal sector. Anything is, you know, even minor, minor details and minor issues are fully, you know, discussed in an open session. And everybody, you know, knows, you know, what your feeling was on that and why you voted this way or, or that way. So it's that transparency, I think, is much more apparent in municipal than you would see in the private sector. Which, I, I mean, I think is a good thing, frankly, because even in the private sector, there's certainly major policy decisions, I wish senior management would have pushed the information down so we knew why we were zigging instead of zagging. And, you know, obviously, in the municipal sector, it's, you know, probably not the case. If anyone's paying even the, you know, slight bit of attention, they should know why the board decided to go in one, one direction versus another.
Yeah, the Board of Directors is not, of a private company, does not meet in open session.
That is very correct.
And there are no form rules on the call.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, Brad, go ahead.
I'm gonna go with some more tricky questions that I've asked all night, I guess.
All right.
The town is facing a significant budget shortfall due to unexpected tax revenue declines. How would you prioritize spending cuts while minimizing the impact on essential services?
Uh, well, I, I, I think that is a discussion to occur with department heads. I'm a firm believer that the best decisions are made by the one, and best recommendations are made by those that are closest to, to a decision. But that being said, I think it's obviously very important to, to have the select board and, and other boards and committees involved in those discussions as well. Generally, you, you all are seeing it from a higher level, a thirty thousand foot level, if you will, and that's gonna drive priorities. That's gonna drive, you know, the best for the town type of thing. You know, someone, a department head is gonna see things for their department and what their department can do. It's gonna take someone that, you know, at the select board level, at that higher, higher level, to say, I see what you're saying, but, you know, th- this is a priority, so we're gonna concentrate more on this. And then, like I said, as before, now it's up to the town administrator and the director courts to say, okay, let's, let's make this happen. You know, this is what we have to work with, this is the end we have, let's make it, let's do the best we can with it. And I mean, those are obviously the, the toughest decisions, is, is making cuts and prioritizing everything. So it really is, I think, has to be collaborative, or it just not, it's not gonna work, for a simple fact that people are gonna say, oh, well, you know, they just never liked me. They have to know why this is a priority and why that cut has to occur.
I can go with another one.
Go for it.
Go for it.
Town's considering a controversial development or just controversial project in general with very divided residents. How would you facilitate a productive public discussion, manage competing interests, and make recommendations to the select board?
Yeah, well, and I think that's okay. I think what you have to do is you have to have, I'll refer to them as informational sessions. And those informational sessions should be open to the public, and that's where questions need to be addressed. It's one of the things I've certainly seen throughout the years in, in government, is there's that controversial issue, and unless you can get the facts out there, and if there's a vacuum of information, that vacuum is gonna be filled with the most negative possible scenarios, whether they're factual or not. But once they're in that vacuum and they're filling that vacuum, heaven help you, to try to dispel and dissuade people from actually believing that's the fact. So I think you have to be out in front of it. You have to recognize, yep, there's, this is polarizing, but these are the facts. People will ask their questions, and you disseminate the facts. And as I said, it's better if everyone's in the same room, so everyone's hopefully hearing the same thing. And then, once you've had those informational sessions, try to memorialize them. You know, here's what some of the questions were, here's what the answers were, and I think it's very fair in those sessions, if someone says, well, what about X? You know, I, I never considered that. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look into that. It's, you know, it's a good point. I, I never thought about it. Anyone else know? And now, it's obviously very incumbent, whatever that question was, whatever, the answer that you didn't have, get the answer and then, once again, disseminate it so that everyone knows what it is. And I think that's the only way, because hopefully, at that point, even though it is controversial, it would probably, I mean, for something that large, it probably ends up being a town meeting vote, and, you know, let, let democracy rule, you know, one person, one vote, and, yeah, if not, then, you know, obviously, it falls on, on you all to, to make those difficult decisions. But once again, you would have the forum, you know, would say, you know what? I'm voting in favor, here's why I'm voting in favor, based upon the facts. And if we've done our job correctly in getting the facts out and addressing those questions, people will be able to say, well, okay, I, I don't agree, but at least I understand how they reached that decision, based upon the facts.
I think for Ethy, what questions does he have for us portion of the program?
I was gonna ask, is it time for that portion of the program? Your turn, your turn to ask.
Um, well, actually, uh, some of the questions were answered, but, um, the stabilization fund balance.
It is about, it is seven or eight percent of the operating budget, so that would make it about seven or eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
For operating stabilization, we have some capital stabilization, also, I don't know, probably one fifty to two hundred. I don't have my computer and the numbers that are in the spreadsheet, I could, Beth might be able to look it up. It's in the budget spreadsheet, Beth?
Is it in the budget spreadsheet?
I think so. It might be in Big Picture, because the numbers might be from Lori. They're somewhere, I can't remember where they are.
Is it the Big Picture sheet?
I've seen them, uh, maybe. But, no, Big Picture is something I created, and it wasn't from Lori. It's somewhere. Give me five minutes in front of my computer, I can find it. But.
Well, I, I was gonna say.
So we're, so we're, we're in that range, we're.
So when you include capital, brings you up around probably ten percent?
Yeah.
Wow, that's nice and solid.
I mean, I mean, it may be more like operating is at six, and with capital, we're at eight.
Okay, but just still pretty solid.
Yeah, it, we're, we're definitely, we're in the five to ten percent range.
That's a, that's a good range to be in.
Yeah, probably close.
With regards to free cash, is that utilized for operating, uh, operational expenses?
Never.
No.
Never.
Our policy is to use, is to use free cash for one-off expenses, project and capital acquisitions.
Got it, got it, okay.
Like the fire department needs a new air compressor.
So.
It's like, that's, that's on the warrant, uh, warrant, that's a, that's an article in the, the town warrant coming up.
Gotcha. And for free cash, is that usually dispersed through a special town meeting, or do you wait all the way to annual?
We typically, um, we have typically wound up waiting, so the free cash that was certified back in October is, uh, being allocated through the, the annual town meeting coming up in June.
Gotcha.
It's like, I mean, if there were a need, we would call a special town meeting, but if it can wait, why?
I don't think we've ever.
We, we haven't done it in, in years.
If we had a special, I think we did it if.
My, my opinion has always been that the annual town meeting is when we are thinking budget things.
Yep.
And so therefore, it makes sense to, and everyone, that's when everyone knows, this is when we're divvying up the money and allocating it based on priority. And if we do something, a special town meeting, if it's not an emergency, now people are trying to get them a, in, in early consideration. And I just, I'd rather just give everyone the chance to have an equal shot at the money.
I, I hear you.
It'll all be the same.
It, it's a lot easier to, when you have that type of equity, without someone saying, oh.
Yeah, and typically, we avoid having fall specials unless, like, one year we did it because our police contract finalized after annual town meeting. So we wanted to do it before the tax rate was set, so that we were actually accurately setting a tax rate and had an appropriate budget in place before it, you know?
So it sounds like it's pretty rare, and it takes something very special.
We used to do more specials, and we've gotten out of the habit, and I think it's probably good that we've gotten out of the habit.
I think our last special was triggered by a citizen petition.
I think you're right.
Yes.
And we get quite a few of them.
So we had to, so we had, so they, they, they got the signatures, so we had a town meeting, because that's what the law says.
And that's one of those differences between the private sector and the public sector.
Yep. In the private sector, boss, no.
And ARPA funds, I believe they've been all expended, or?
Pretty much.
Pretty much. We might have some residual, I'm not sure that we spent quite all the way through it.
If they haven't been spent, the, the majority of what hasn't been spent has been allocated.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, 'cause I know that has to be encumbered by the end of this calendar year.
Right.
So it sounds like we're all set there. Okay, so now, I guess, my, my interview question for you guys. What do you all see as the biggest challenge or, or issue?
I forgot to ask my question.
Oh, okay, look at that. See, I, I fed you one there.
You did. Tell me about the last time you had somebody angry in your face and how you handled it.
Oh, I do have three grown daughters.
You ruined three lives.
Well, let's speak for you, because they lived to adulthood, and you lived for them to adulthood.
That's true. Well, my, my, my wife is, is a very special lady, so she, she had a lot to do with that. Well, uh, well, I'll, I'll, once again, I'll, I'll stick to the municipal. I, and this was actually not last campaign, but two campaigns ago. I had the sweetest-looking little old lady, grandmotherly type. I had a standout, you know, informational, uh, standout Ed handouts and things along those lines, and she comes up to me, so I'm expecting, you know, a nice little interaction. And I have my handout all set to give it to her, and I just starting to hand it over to her, and she kind of gives it the old push out of the way. Yeah, and I said, oh, is, what's the problem? She goes, I know the problem, it's you, aponte. I was like, oh, boy, this isn't gonna go well. And she said, you're in this for the money, you, you're a money grubber. I was like, do you have any idea how much we make is, on the select board? I would literally make more money if I asked if you'd like fries with that, ma'am. And, no.
I wish we could get to that sound.
Yeah, yeah, their, their budget is five times ours, and he only gets paid eight hundred dollars more than we do.
So she's accusing me of, you know, being a money grubber, and this, that, and the other thing, and I tried to explain to her, I said, no. I said, where, where are you getting your information from? I'm not stupid, I can read the reports. Well, she was loo- looking at the annual budget report, which is, you know, it's classic spreadsheet form, and under selectmen, it.
It's like three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, because it, it has the town administrator under that, it has the, the town administrator's administrative assistant, and there's some other miscellaneous things for meetings and dues and so on and so forth. So she thinking that's each selectman's salary, I guess. So I, I was trying to explain it to her, and she was, she's calming down a little bit, but it, luckily, I actually had that, and so I was able to, you know, rifle through my stuff and was able to pull out the, the budget report. And I explained, I say, no, that's, I said, look, I said, the town administrator's salary isn't anywhere else in here, it's under that line item. I said, that's, there's actually detail underneath that, I said, it's, you know, for brevity's sake, it's not broken down by each individual account and, and chart, you know, in our chart of accounts. Well, after, I mean, literally, probably about ten minutes of, am I gonna have to call the, the chief of police here, you know, to get the taser out? And finally got her to the point where she, she didn't think I was necessarily a money grubber. And I, I, I don't know if I actually got her vote, but at least she, she was able to calm down just by, I, I, in a situation like that, I mean, you say that, 'cause this is also kind of funny, but I think it also, it shows, if you can let people vent, a lot of times, they just want to vent, they just want to get it out, and if you sit there and you actually really listen to them, they feel a heck of a lot better. Like I said, may, they might not walk out the door saying, wow, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add him to my Christmas list, but at least they felt as though, okay, I, I got my gripe out on the table, he heard me, we had a discussion and a dialogue about it. I'll go away, maybe not a happy, but I'll, I'll be able to go away, at least semi-satisfied. So I think that's always your, your best bet, let them, let them vent, and once they're done venting, if there's something, obviously, if there's something not factual, such as, you know, with the, with the old lady, try to introduce the facts, say, well, this is, this is the reality of the situation, you know? Your, your facts are incorrect or incomplete. But I think the key there, like I said, just, just let them get it off their chest. And I, I, I mean, honestly, frankly, that even works in, in the private sector, that, that worked for me as well. IT guys can be passionate a bit about their, their work, and if someone disagrees with it, they, they take it very personally, I've noticed. And you just, once again, just, just let them vent, let them get it out, and then, you know, move on.
All right, coming back to his question.
So his question was what, what the challenges are?
Yeah, what's the, what's the biggest, what's the one that keeps you up at night?
I, the one that keep, the one that I would say is the most immediate concern is that we, we have some, we have some, we have some transition in the personnel. And so therefore, I mean, that is, it's, I won't call it a crisis, but crisis is danger and opportunity. And so therefore, it's like, I mean, we're, we're losing good people, but there's a chance to, I mean, maybe do better, or at least I'd like to think we can keep things going as well as they have been going. I mean, one, the assessor's going, that's not under the select board's control, that's under the Board of Assessors' control. But we have a, we have an interim treasurer, um, we have an interim grant writer, and we have a new highway superintendent starting next Monday.
Yeah, starting next Monday, yeah.
So, so, and so that's, and so that's.
And then the highway is under us.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Yes, yes, we, yeah, we, a week ago yesterday, we had him in here, and we signed, and he, we signed the letter.
Excellent, excellent, okay. Excellent, excellent, okay.
So, and so it's just, that's, that's, it's just, so that's, with the transition, there's going to be some storming as new people come in and settle into their roles.
Yeah, so, okay.
And so it's navigating, it's navigating, that's a, that's a challenge that whoever we select is going to have to help us navigate.
Got it.
And I think another thing too is, being the town that we are, being mostly residential, we don't have a lot of sources for income other than residential taxes.
Yeah.
So changing, or at least working towards something to, or at least being it. If we don't bring business in, we need to figure out more grant opportunities. And being able to identify those and identify projects and how to fund the projects.
Well, I think frankly, a good step is the fact that you all at least have a grant writing position. I've been trying for probably ten years, or nearly ten years, to get a grant writing position in the town of Belcher Town.
Certainly, it more than pays for it, so.
It was one of the best decisions the previous board made, was to bring that person. Because they don't just write the grants, they administer them. And that's, and if you are looking into that, I would recommend you get someone who can administer the grants, 'cause then you make, then you complete the requirements and you get the money, or you don't have to refund what they gave you. This is, this is, we have been able to do so much with the money that that position has put in. We've got so much more money in to the town than what we have paid that person for doing it.
Yeah.
It's like, we are, we are figuring out how, we're filling that position.
And like you said, it's really twofold, because not only is it getting the money in, but it's so important to have to.
Follow.
Yeah, oh my gosh, the follow-up, the administration can be worse, I mean, almost always is worse than the actual grant writing and the application itself. Because if you don't dot that i, cross that t. I mean, frankly, I've heard some real horror stories. Luckily, not in Belcher Town, but in other towns where that exactly happened. They didn't file this report or didn't do something or other. And now the government, or, you know, be it Fed or state, is saying, hey, guess what? You didn't, you didn't adhere to the rules and regulations. We want, we want that money back. Good luck, because no one budgets for that.
Exactly.
Okay, so I, yeah, and as far as, because I did notice you guys are probably around, what, ten, eleven percent is business and eighty-nine, ninety percent is on the tax.
I would say we're closer to five percent business.
I think according to DLS, it's almost ten percent.
Really? Okay. I know, I know, when, Al presents it to us at the reclassification.
Right, but I think it does. Well, I think it's mostly by zoning and it goes by GAVIT.
So we had a large factory right here and they've since relocated to another town.
Hmm, that hurts.
And that property's gonna be for sale, so the redevelopment of that is something that.
Is, that will be something we would want to benefit the town.
It's gonna be a really pivotal point, and I don't know that we're involved as much as we potentially could be.
And I think that's where, once again, with you all being a designated economic target area, 'cause one of the things in Belcher Town that we've done is we've partnered up with Mass Development. And that's been huge, talk about grants. I mean, those folks are talking to the governor. And so that's, that's very good, having that insider, if you will, in Boston, to be able to talk to the right people and kind of get you, you know, in your grant application, go to the top of the list. It's humongous. And I mean, it's certainly helped Belcher Town with our old state school lands, because unfortunately, they, the state left it an absolute mess when they, when they left. And Mass Development's been absolute godsend, just getting grants to help remediate some of those environmental issues. So someone like a Mass Development, not only are they good at the grants and things along those lines, but they're, they're very good from a marketing perspective. Because as soon as someone's expressing any interest in coming to Massachusetts, usually that's gonna hit Mass Development and it's gonna be on their, their to-do list.
And kind of along those lines, I mean, we also have a site on Route Nine, which is a major part of our business section, that is a brownfield site and.
Ah, yes.
Has DEP loans and back taxes and.
All that.
We had a hundred and sixty-six acres of brownfields. Twenty-two buildings.
Was it remediated?
Not all of it yet. We have one, two, three, well, four, four buildings left that have to be remediated. Unfortunately, one is the old power plant, which is probably the biggest one. But we're actually in the process right now of working with Mass Development to get the grants, to be able to bring that down. And that's.
And I, I mean, and I've been researching that. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of grants for town municipalities to remediate these sites.
Yeah, exactly. And I guess that's the one good thing, is that with brown, I mean, no one wants to have a brownfield, especially in a nice business zone, when you're limited with your business zone. But I think the state has recognized that. And as I said, I mean, three hundred and fifty-one municipalities in Massachusetts want to increase their business tax base. So they realize, okay, for the betterment of the entire state and individual towns, we have to be able to provide those grants to clean those things up. Because what developers, everyone gonna touch it with a ten-foot pole, knowing there's potentially millions of dollars of hazardous material there?
Right.
And so I think that would be a big thing, Mass Development. Couple that together with the economic target area. Now, once again, last, as we were talking, you know, earlier, now from a marketing perspective, you can say, hey, we have an attractive, yeah, an attractive parcel over here that might be able to work for you. And we can give you some tax incentive perhaps to sweeten the offer. So, you know, those are the types of things that we've had some success with. And as I said, if you can get a partnership with Mass Development, it's worth as weight in gold. In fact, we even told the police chief, I mean, only half-tongue-in-cheek, if they're late for a meeting and they're speeding through town, you look the other way.
Give them an escort.
Yeah, yeah, that's a better idea, better idea. I think that's pretty much it for the questions I had. I guess, any, any last questions for me?
I can't think of any.
How, so if we were to choose you, how soon?
As soon as you need someone.
Yeah. I mean, I think we're looking to do something.
I think from a timetable, I think we will probably select a first-choice candidate in the next week or two. And then at that point, negotiations would start for whether we can come to an agreement. And then the thought is, is that by the time that all finishes, I expect all the work going into town meeting will pretty much be done. It would be, I think it would be preferable if we could have someone come in, or at least be at town meeting. But my thought is, is that we're probably not gonna be able to bring someone on to finish, do most of the heavy lifting ahead of town meeting. But after town meeting, there is getting ready for end of year and such. And so it's like, I know that's been very clear that we're going to, we're looking to have this locked up in three to four weeks and be able to announce a, be, announce a who's coming into the position.
We're gonna be as expeditious as we can, given the restrictions, the restrictions of municipal development.
Yes.
You're a five-member select board, so you can talk to the select board member and not have quorum. We're three.
Right.
We cannot discuss anything unless we're supposed, because we're in a room with quorum. And therefore, we cannot discuss business.
Wow, that's a good point. I never thought about that.
Which is tricky, because his son and my daughter are in the same grade.
Chance meeting in the parking lot, yeah.
As long as we, I mean, we can talk, we just can't talk about town business.
Right, but anytime anybody sees two of you.
Oh, gosh, yeah. The rumor mill starts picking up.
If we chit-chat after, if we adjourn the meeting and then there's a little chit-chat going on.
Yeah, yeah. I heard him over there at the, at the corner store talking about it.
They said the word town. But I'm sure, I'm sure Belcher Town has its share of people who take, who also take a passionate interest in keeping a beady eye on the elected representatives.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And it wasn't just the little old lady at the corner. Yeah, I think, I think we're good.
All right, well, if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out. Karen will forward it on to us, because I think she was your point of contact.
Yes, yeah, originally Charlie, now Karen.
Yeah.
Yep, all right, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Ron.
Great to meet you.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
That brings us to the end of the interviews.
And it does bring us to the end.
Is there any, is there any discussion of the, of the candidates that we would like to conduct before we adjourn the meeting? Or do we just wanna mull, do we want to just mull and ponder this and come back at a future date?
It's past my bedtime. I do have a firing order of like, who I would hire. But, I mean, one of the nice things is, I'm just gonna make this general statement about the candidates. Unlike when we had two highway supers in and I voted for none of the above. I do have a preferential order. But I also feel like we could throw the three names in a hat, pull one out and not do the town a disservice. So it's a nice position to be in.
I think, I think that it's going to be figuring out which one is, we, is converging on which one is the best. But I'm also of the opinion that we have three good candidates.
Yeah, so I know what my firing order is.
Me too.
Do we wanna just talk about it? Or because we don't have it on the agenda to vote, we can't?
I believe that, I would say because it's not on the agenda, we cannot vote on it. But I think we can.
Discuss, we can discuss our thoughts.
Of the candidates, 'cause I can't imagine that, I mean, that, that we would not be able to, after talking to them, have the opportunity to share our thoughts and compare notes.
Yeah, I mean, based on, based on what I saw tonight, and thank goodness, navigational capability is not one of the job requirements of a town administrator.
Well, he says he's good with technology. He's like, come on, Google, how do I find Sixth Central Street?
So I think where you're going is what I'm gonna say is, I would go number one with him.
Yeah.
My biggest concern is, are we gonna be able to afford him?
Well, yeah, and, and, yeah, so, 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 well, so, I think part of, I don't know the answer to those other questions. And I think that's where having a firing order in our head is good. Because I know we're not voting it tonight, but we could conceivably come back and say, yes, this is our agreed-upon firing order. And then if we can't come to terms, then we don't have to come back together to vote again, to then negotiate with the next person.
That we basically, we rack them one to three, we rack and stack them one to three. And if we can't close on one, well, we know who number two is.
Right.
I, I think that makes, I think that makes sense, 'cause otherwise, we lose time if we are, if we get to the point where we know we're not gonna be able to, we get to an impasse with number one, we know we aren't gonna close.
The other thing is, is every single person that walked in here, our budget is a public document. If they didn't walk in knowing at least the order of magnitude of what we can offer them, they shouldn't have wasted our time by walking in.
And they all have select board experience. They all understand the restrictions under which we operate with the budget.
So, so, I'm not, I'm not that concerned that we can't afford them. And, you know, we didn't ask the question, and I usually ask the question, but because we didn't ask, we just got it offered with the other candidate that isn't currently employed and didn't ask. You know, but he's no longer employed with the, with bearings, right? Since twenty, the resume ends at 2023. So, it's, you know, it's one of those scenarios where I'm presum, I am making an assumption, I'm totally making an assumption, that he wouldn't have walked in a room with us if we were at least somewhere in the neighborhood of what he found acceptable. So. So we can think on it. And I have to think about it, because my two and three is.
Am I allowed, I mean, are you leaning towards him for one?
I'm leaning towards him for one, yeah.
I, I feel the same.
Okay.
But I think, and then, I would say, I, I liked, I liked them in reverse order.
Yeah.
I think for once, without even trying, we may actually be unanimous, though I, I can.
So.
I like the, I like the third guy. I'm just concerned with some of the experiments.
I think it'll be, I think there'll be a little bit more learning curve.
Right.
Actually, I think, I actually had some learning curve concerns, actually, with two as well. I think they, I think they will have different learning curve challenges.
Right.
But, so I could almost flip my two and three and not have, I wouldn't lose any wink of sleep over it, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
And I, and I think they have the right temperaments to, to do the learning that they would have to do. So.
So what I would suggest is that.
We think on it.
We think on it, we talk to people that we care to consult, who may have some experience with them or may be watching the videos and such, or just may say, did you think of this, did you think of this? And let's put this on the, let's put this on the agenda for consideration this Thursday or Friday ahead of our 6:15 scheduled meeting.
Run it down with that.
And I think that way, it's like, and if we, hopefully, we will converge on something and agree on something and have an actionable path forward at that point. I mean, I think that, I mean, I think we all know what we would do if we had to vote now. But I think that, just given where we are, I think taking a little more time and making, thinking about it and looking things over is not gonna hook the timer.
So I'm gonna tell you, it's not, I'm not so much moving, thinking stuff over as, as doing some reconnaissance.
Okay.
But.
That's, that's not a bad use of time either. It's like, I just, for things like this, I always like to leave them in the back of my head for a while, if the schedule permits. Sometimes, sometimes I think of something and say, oh, I should have thought of that.
So what time do we wanna meet them next Thursday?
Uh, let's see, I guess, what time did you join us early? Can you do 5:45?
I hate you, but yes.
I could, I could put it, actually, you know what?
Is that enough time for thirty minutes?
I, Beth, I could do, I could put this on the agenda for after our 6:15 meeting. 'Cause we're not bringing anyone else in, so it's, it's not like I gotta schedule someone else for a special time. So I can just put it on the agenda after the 6:15 executive session. Would that be better for you?
It would be better for me, to be honest.
Then let's do that. It's like, I don't think, I don't see, I don't see things running super late on Thursday.
Yeah, we can reconvene an open meeting and there's a high statistical likelihood that that executive session would be open meeting anyway, so. Just because it's, it's a tradition here in the town of Brookfield.
Exactly. Excellent. Does anyone, does anyone want a copy of the letters of reference from?
I would like copies.
Right, I'd easily from, all right, then I'll make, I'll make copies for, I'll make copies for all of us and I'll leave the originals with Karen, since they're technically public documents.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, read my mind. All right, all in favor of adjourned at 9:49, please say aye. Oh, thank God, aye.